2020 Duval City Council Meeting to Order. Would you all please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Hold on, lots of buttons I gotta push here. Councilmember Bridnicki.
Here.
Councilmember Iyer.
Present.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
Did you say here?
Yes.
Here.
Okay, sorry. We have a call. And just really quick, being in this room, we have a very like tiny little speaker in the corner that I can hear you guys through, so it's not super loud. I can't get it to work through the TV. So when we're doing motions and such, if you could just make sure to say who you are, because my head will be down to take the notes, I would really appreciate it. And it sounds like Steve's coming downstairs to help.
Oh. All right. So with that, under additions and corrections to the agenda, under consent, please add claims for June 2, 2020 in the amount of $346,733.94. Under new business, add for agenda item number one, AB 20-50, ordinance creating Chapter 6.30 Civil Emergency. Because we don't have a resolution yet for council regarding the civil unrest declaration of emergency that I signed today, we will bring the resolution back to the next council meeting. And just to give an FYI on that, you all have a copy of the resolution. I'll talk about that under my report. And with that, are there any council members that would like to speak this evening? Councilmember McHenry? Is there anyone else? All right, thank you. So with that, do we have a motion to adopt this evening's council agenda?
Move, Mike Remington.
Michelle Hoag.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion this evening to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Mike Remington.
Mike Remington's moved. Do we have a second?
Second, Michelle Hoag.
Great, Councilmember Hoag has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And next up, we have approval of the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Jody, I'm now getting confused as to where you put that in the minutes, correct? As corrected, okay, good, we're good there. So now, since the minutes are pulled from the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the committee of the whole minutes for May 19, 2020?
So move.
Second, Mike Remington.
Okay, Councilmember Bridnicki moved. Mayor Pro Tem Remington seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And then, do we have a motion to approve the council minutes as corrected for May 19, 2020?
Move, Mike Remington.
Amy McHenry, second.
All right, so Mayor Pro Tem Remington moved. Councilmember McHenry seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And before we move on to comments for the audience, I would like to ask council to take a moment of silence in remembrance of Mr. George Floyd and all those that have been injured or wrongfully arrested since that time in just if concern for our country and people in it. Councilmember Remington mentioned a little bit in the committee of the whole, but I think it would be appropriate if we took a quick moment of silence. Thank you very much. Now we are on to comments from the audience. Do we have anyone on the phone that would like to provide public comment this evening? Jody, is there anyone in the waiting room?
Not at this time.
Okay. And actually, I'm going to forward this on to city council before I read it. We did get one public comment. I had received a call from David Hoffman, who's local government affairs and public policy manager for Puget Sound Energy last week, wanting to express support for our 275th project. And this is what he submitted for public comment. Dear Mayor Okerlander and members of the Duval City Council, I'm writing today regarding the ongoing work to provide community access to a PSC electric distribution quarter for recreation purposes in Duval. PSC is committed to providing clean, safe, and reliable power to the communities we serve. Whenever possible, we welcome the opportunity to partner with municipalities to provide recreation access for community members. This is one of those opportunities, and we appreciate the coordination with the city administration and community on this project. It's worth noting, the cleanup of illegal dumping on PSC properties creates a cost borne by all PSC customers. Unfortunately, that activity has occurred on the property in Duval, further complicating cleanup. PSC is proud to partner with the city of Duval to beautify and improve this quarter in order to build an amenity the whole community can enjoy. Thank you for the opportunity to submit these comments. Sincerely, David Hoffman, Local Government Affairs and Public Policy Manager for Puget Sound Energy. And any, just one more chance of if anybody's on the phone for a public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will go on to mayor's report. First of all, I'll get through the easy stuff, quick stuff first, I guess you could say. Once again, it is June and Pride Month. So I have once again issued a proclamation to honor our LGBTQ community and families within the city of Duval. Of course, the original plan was to have a community barbecue this year with every invite everyone to come and have a nice big potluck. But with COVID, we weren't able to do that. So this is about as good as it gets, unfortunately. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation into the record. Whereas during the month of June, pride celebrations are held across the country in recognition of the Stonewall riots, the birth of the movement for equality for non-cisgender individuals. And whereas, over the past several decades, the rich ethnic, social, and cultural heritage of our city has been further enriched by the growing diversity of our community, including those who identify as gay, lesbian, bisexual, queer, or transgender. And whereas, the Puget Sound region hosts the largest pride celebration in the country in the city of Seattle. And whereas, the city of Duval is a welcoming city that supports all human beings and denounces discrimination in all forms. And whereas, celebrating pride helps awareness to the history of the LGBTQ community, facilitating understanding, acceptance, and support. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Duval does recognize and salute pride in the LGBTQ community, and be it further resolved that the city of Duval does hereby proclaim the month of June as Pride Month in the city of Duval. And we had another proclamation. This is brought up by Councilmember Hoag from Sound Cities. And it's the proclamation relating rejecting COVID-related stigma. Councilmember Hoag, did you want to read that one to council since this is your item? If not, that's okay, I can do it as well.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, council, for agreeing to bring this forward. I think especially with what's happened in the last week or so, it makes it even more important to be expressing our displeasure for harassment and any type of discrimination in our communities. So whereas, the city of Duval is a welcoming city that supports all human beings and denounces discrimination in all forms. And whereas, since the outbreak of COVID-19, immigrant and refugee community leaders and civil rights organizations have reported a regional and national increase in bias, harassment, and hate crimes, particularly against Asian-American and Pacific Islander, Black and African-American, Hispanic and Latino, and other marginalized communities. And whereas, misinformation about coronavirus propagates fear that hurts people and impairs the ability of our first responders and other city services to provide necessary response to COVID-19. And whereas, each of us can and should promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, support all fellow community members, prevent the spread of misinformation, and reject hate and bias in all forms. And whereas, city of Duval rejects racially-based bias, harassment, and hate crimes due to COVID-19, will not tolerate discrimination of any kind, and denounces all COVID-19-related misnaming, blaming, and harassment based on race, ethnicity, place of origin, physical ability, socioeconomic status, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, or religion. And whereas, we ask community members who observe or are experiencing incidences of discrimination, harassment, or hate crimes are encouraged to call 911 in emergency circumstances and/or to report the incident to the Washington State Human Rights Commission or the King County Office of Civil Rights. Now therefore, the city of Duval hereby proclaims our commitment to an inclusive community that rejects stigma and bias related to COVID-19. And we urge all our community members and residents to treat each other with respect and work together to overcome all expressions of hate and bigotry. And what I would just be looking for is a motion to council from council that you all support this so that we can post it with every council member's name.
Is it enough to say so moved? Or do you need me to add any language to that?
I think you're good, because this is pretty informal.
Okay, so so moved, Amy McHenry.
Second, Mike Remington.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Bridnicki. And then Councilmember Hoag.
First off, I just want to really thank you for bringing the LGBTQ resolution forward, for recognizing that community as I serve them and they're a big part of my business, my schools, and the youth that come here. So it's really important to feel safe for that community. But the other part is also the discrimination for people. And I can tell you, in the last three weeks or maybe few months, every time I've gone out, I have faced an incident. And it's very scary. So I feel really confident about our city adopting this and making me feel safe here in this community. So thank you for moving those forward.
My pleasure. And then next, we have the statement from the city council regarding the death of George Floyd and police brutality. And Amy, I'm for some reason having trouble pulling it up. Do you have it?
I have it.
Okay.
You want to, did you want to take a formal vote on that? Because you had a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm, thank you. I apologize. Trying to move along too quick. So all those in favor of the COVID proclamation, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. You can tell it's already been a long day, so apologize for that. So moving on to the letter that council member or statement Councilmember McHenry wrote on behalf of council. And this tags on to the statement that the police command staff and I put out yesterday. And Amy had a really nice eloquent statement, Councilmember McHenry on her Facebook post. And I asked her to bring this forward because I had a feeling that council might want to make a statement. So with that, Councilmember McHenry.
Thank you. And no offense at all, if anyone sees something that could be tweaked in any way, I put this together pretty quickly. So to the Duval community, there is a deep anguish in our hearts over the wrongful death of George Floyd and many others before him. The Duval City Council sends our deepest condolences to Mr. Floyd's family and friends for their horrific loss. We will remember that this grief we all feel today is present in the daily lives of many, and we need to advocate for change. In our police department's commitment to serving all members of our community and continuing to grow a relationship defined by respect and integrity. We are here to listen to our community and work to advance racial equity in all areas of our influence. We have seen the response of the Duval community to tragedies that have befallen us in the past. The outpouring of love, support, and care from this community have defined the true role of a neighbor. When people in Duval are hurting, neighbors step up to support them in any way possible. Today and going forward, we will continue to stand against hate, racism, bigotry, and injustice in our community. And then we could just end it by saying the Duval City Council, or maybe list everyone's names and positions depending on what you all think.
So were there any suggested edits to that or any thoughts? I would just say that I think you did a really nice job on it.
Thank you. Is this something we need to vote on or head nods work? What do you need for this?
I think head nods are okay, because this will just, we'll put this up on the website and put it up, put it on Letterhead, put it up on the website and have Sean post it on the social media.
Okay, great.
And then you guys will have the PDF copy as well to distribute as you see fit.
Great, thank you.
So Councilmember Hoag.
Thank you, Councilmember McHenry. It was very well written. Yeah. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you for such, doing it on such short notice, too. So, okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the rest of my report. As you know, it's been definitely a wild few days. You know, first, just to get it out of the way, I learned from the police chief on Sunday that somebody's fence had been vandalized with anti-cop graffiti after we started seeing the Seattle riots. And we started talking about what we need to do moving forward and what we've seen. Many things are privileged that I can't discuss, but in general, we have a clear emergency situation in King County. And as a result of conversations, we've identified some areas where we need to have code in place pretty much immediately in order to allow our police officers to use tools and resources to handle any situation that might come to Duval. And it was also ironic, our emergency management plan is based on all hazards. And as we learned in the pandemic, and this is very common for cities our size. So as we learned during the pandemic, we didn't have a pandemic section, and we didn't have a looting or riot section. And I think that probably most small cities, including the city of Isiqua, who literally did all of their work on the fly during their meeting last night. For all of us, it's been a quick turnaround and learning experience in trying to figure out what we need to do for our communities as well as what we can do to make sure that our community members have the right to express free speech and gather and express grief and all of those types of things. I think many are aware that a young member of our community, Breaker Chittenden, ordered, organized a candlelight vigil on Saturday evening. I think there were about 15 folks there, but from what I saw in his post, many of us lit a candle if we couldn't be there or folks didn't want to be there for the risk of social distancing. So, you know, overall, I am very proud of the overall reaction of our community and how people continue to come together. In routine business, our Sound Cities Association has been having regular mayors' calls with multiple check-ins, really to talk about COVID and budget-related issues. This week, those calls shifted to civil unrest. And that's definitely dominated the conversation for the last couple of days, trying to find out what folks are going through, what actions they're taking, and how they're overall managing it. It's been, for the cities that have been looted, it's been devastating for those mayors. And they're worried about their officers, they're worried about their community members, and they're worried about their business owners, especially in the middle of a pandemic. So it's been a very emotional time during these meetings with lots of very serious discussions. Today, we had the Sound, Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association Mayor's meeting. Again, our topic really surrounded a little bit of legislative issues. Senator Mark Mulik frequently attends. So we talked about state shared revenue with cities and how we need to do everything we can to protect that moving into the next legislative session. And then, of course, everything going on with the civil unrest in the area. Last week, I believe it's Thursday, King County mayors had a phone call with King County Executive Dow Constantine and Public Health Director Patty Hayes to talk specifically about our unique issues in moving forward in this COVID pandemic and the fact that many of us are isolated, have not had the numbers that other areas have had, and that we're really on the brink with some of our small businesses getting up and going. The executive has been supportive of our non-contiguous UJ cities in trying to, in understanding that we can open up safely sooner than others. But the next day, King County mayors had a call with Governor Inslee, and it was clear that he was not going to let us move to phase two any earlier. That said, as Mr. Tozer pointed out in his report, the county has been able to apply for a phase 1.5, which is really kind of in between where we're at in phase two. And I think for a lot of our small retail businesses, this will be enough to help them reopen. We are talking internally as a team about, I don't know that Sean mentioned this, and if I missed it, my apologies, is that when we have restaurants reopening, there are many cities considering expanding the space in which they can have outdoor seating so that they can have a larger capacity in their restaurants and appropriately socially distanced. So we are talking to the chamber about that to see if that is something that our restaurants need. And if so, we'll bring something forward to council on that. Last week, the Association of Washington Cities State and Federal Policy Committee met. We were close to a final agenda. It has to go to the board. And again, broadband as an essential utility is one of the key, I guess you could say, wins in this agenda as more and more cities are realizing that it's not just about having service, it's about having reliable service and having some local control over that. We also had the Sound, Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association quarterly meeting via Zoom last week in which all the mayors agreed to send a letter to Governor Inslee, urging him to let us go to phase two. We all know where that's come out, but we've, again, we have progress with the potential phase 1.5. And we had our SEA board meeting last week as well. And last evening, we were very fortunate. The chamber invited me to speak at their regular meeting, but we were able to procure Congresswoman Del Benny for that meeting. So she was able to answer a lot of questions for our businesses on the CARES Act and the HEROES Acts that has yet to pass the Senate. And so I think it was nice for everybody to get that time with her. She was able to spend more than a half an hour with us, which is quite a bit of time for a congresswoman, especially when they're home in district. And with that, I think in general, it's just, we're just trying to keep up with the day-to-day on top of everything else. And at some point, there will be a light at the end of the tunnel, and we can breathe again. So with that, that's my report today. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Councilmember McHenry.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I've had my second meeting now with the JRC, which is Joint Recommendations Committee. And at our last meeting, we voted on the CARES Act funding. So there, I think what I should do is send this to all of you if you want to read, because it's a lot of information. But I can just summarize. Initially, there was some hope that we could get some of it for businesses. And there is, but it's very specific, and I'm not sure. It's mostly for businesses and small businesses and micro enterprise assistance. So essentially, new businesses that start manufacturing medical supplies, creating jobs, things like that. So it's pretty honed in. And it kind of comes down to HUD finally came out with some recommendations on how this should be spent, and it was pretty limiting in using it for businesses in that way. But just to give you a quick rundown, basically, there's two grants. One is emergency, where is it? Emergency Solutions Grant, which is ESG. And then Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. And the amounts that were funneled into those, the ESG got just under a million at $964,000 and some change. And then the CDBG, 3.3 and some change million. And then that one, the CDBG, got broken up into the South King County and North/East King Counties into varying amounts. Again, I'll send this out, so don't need to remember that. But essentially, the priority is for emergency shelters, de-intensifying shelters, food assistance, rental assistance. And so we voted to go with the recommendation by the King County staff that they came to. They, it was split really well, and it was fair. They are only retaining a very small admin cost. So yeah, I'll just send this out, because it's a lot of information. And if you want to read through it all, then you can.
Thank you. And thank you for serving on that committee. That's a big one, and it was awesome to get you on it and to that you got that appointment. So thank you. Do we have any council committee reports tonight? Councilmember Hoag.
So our Finance Committee met and last Wednesday. And I thought the meeting went really well. First thing we talked about is our 2021, 2022 budget. And I know that, you know, we are a little behind on it, but the mayor said that she's, that they're starting to move along and work through it internally. And so hopefully, we'll be getting on track with that soon. Dana Mason told us that the finance statement that was going to be to the auditor's office by May 29. So I think that that's been done. Yay. We also spent quite a bit of time talking about the budget ordinance and restrictions. And the Finance Committee met with Eileen to discuss how to deal with the restrictions. And so, but we discussed that at the Finance Committee meeting as well. And we'll be talking about that later. But we did talk about prioritization of the CARES money, the Corona expenses, and prioritization of the expenses. We went into some detail about that. And the, oh, Dana said that she would be providing us an April report and a financial trends. And she did provide it, I think, to the Finance Committee. I don't know if that's gone to council yet. But we did get it like this week, so thank you.
Not written reports, but as soon as Dana's ready to get it out to the whole council, it'll be out.
Yeah. So we were working on that. But and then the next meeting, it sounds like we'll be working on a procurement policy. So that's kind of, I know there was more, but that kind of gives it, gives a little outline of what we worked on.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions from Councilmember Hoag? Okay, not seeing any. So we will go ahead and move on to the administration update. And this will involve Ms. Thomas and Mr. Lenishewski.
Good evening, mayor and council members of our community. It'll be a pretty quick update. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about community development again. Our inspections have continued to increase over the last month. We're now at a total of 170 building permits submitted since 12/31/19. We will be sending approximately 50 of those units to WC3 for review due to timing constraints and statutory deadlines. We have begun the process for at least We have begun the process for at least looking at a permit specialist assistant planner and plan to come back to the council to release that position in July. And then the next item is departments will be providing quarterly reports to council in July. I'll be working with the mayor pro tem to get those scheduled at some point in July. And then I wanted to let Steve jump in and talk, and what we're gonna, what he's gonna talk about is field rentals during Phase Two. And so, Steve, you're on.
Good evening, everybody. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. Can you hear me okay? All right. I will share my screen well quick. So what I want to make sure, we are doing our best at is trying to be nimble. And what I mean by that is, all right. Go on, here we go. Just so everybody's clear, I wanted to make sure council understands what staff's intent is. So as we get to these really strange times, we're in Phase One, and right now, we have a chance to go to Phase 1.5, which doesn't mean much. Phase Two means a little, and then Phase Three means more relative to outdoor activities and rental space. So how the leagues are sizing up their rent potential. Phase Three, they can go back to regular team activities. Phase Two, they can go to five, you know, so it'd be a coach and four kids. So what I want to make sure, normally, we rent a whole field. I think we're going to struggle to rent a whole field unless a club has their act together and can rent Field One or Two, in the sense that they can self-organize and get enough teams in our area to take the field and utilize it. So I fear if they can't, i.e. they have one coach from one team who can have four kids and another one maybe, you're not going to host a practice for $43 an hour, and if you need lights for that rate. So what my proposal is, making sure we're not going to shortchange anything. We plan to use our hourly rate and just have the option to kind of subdivide the fields into, Field Two can go into two units, Field Three can go to three, and even further down, if we have enough interest, we could divide each half-field into then another half-field for the potential to, you know, use 10 fields and 10 rental spaces, which makes much more sense financially. It gets down to being very difficult and kind of intensive for staff to manage, but we all know we are going to need as much rent as possible. So I just want to make sure, I got head nods around the table here that, hey, if you can rent it to someone for the full freight for an hour, great, and let them do their own math. But if they, we have three different clubs who have small groups, and I do believe this is going to push us through probably July, if not August, and Sean could, you know, maybe relate to when we would expect to see Phase Two or Three, but I just want to be prepared, and I don't want to surprise anybody, and I want to make sure everybody's aware of what our intent is. The intent is try to collect as much revenue as possible, but try to be as flexible as possible, so people will generate use. I fear if we're not nimble, they're just going to go have their practices anyway, and they're small-sided groups, which they can likely fit themselves anywhere they want. But in an effort to try to be organized and try to get back to some level of normalcy, this is kind of what we had thought about as of very recently, and wanted to share. So with that said, I will stop my share so I can see the people and entertain any questions on anyone's behalf.
Councilmember McHenry.
I just want to thank you for the work, because I know that this is not easy to coordinate with various groups. And anyways, I was wondering, have you talked to them about, I mean, slightly smaller field sizes? Because I know last year, it seemed that there was some disagreement on how the fields were split, or, but for practice, really, it is okay. You don't need the full field length, depending on the various levels for different people who might use it. Does that make sense? I just want to make sure, like, what you anticipate with that.
Yes. So what we do anticipate is, just not knowing of this Phase Two relative to Phase Three. Phase Three, Red Bull Football, they have their schedule, and they do a great job. They book the fields, they put their teams on them from, you know, whatever it is, four to 7:30, and they're, they're organized, not a big deal. But if each team can't have, if I, as a coach, can only have four kids, right, our club isn't going to book an hour's worth of rent for four kids, then I get to go do four more times for 16 total kids, right? So we're just trying to create some flexibility if the opportunity is necessary. Again, we have it lined out already through, you know, July and August, assuming everybody gets to go to Phase Three. I just want to make sure we're clear with you folks, like, we're going to charge the standard hourly rate, which is in resolution, but we're going to try to break it up if the opportunity arises to get made whole to the best of our abilities, because we need some rent, we've got to generate something. August is a huge month, soccer starts up, lacrosse starts up, football gets going. So I fear if we're still in Phase Two, we're going to have to be super flexible and really be a real pain for tracking purposes, because, you know, $43 divided by two is $21.50, divided again is $10.75 an hour. So we're going to be kind of nickel and diming everybody, but again, nickel and diming will help us get some of our revenue going and get some field use booked and try to get back to some kind of normal.
Well, I think, oh, sorry. I think it's a really good idea, so thank you.
Any other, oh, looks like Councilmember Iyer's good, and so I take silence as people are okay with it. So we've got three thumbs up already, so I think we'll go ahead and, and make this up four thumbs up. We've got a consensus, we'll make it happen. And thank you to Steve, Mr. Lenishewski, and Alana McCoy for making this effort. Obviously, creativity and thinking out of the box is what's going to get us ahead over the next several months, and his, Steve and his crew are excellent at that.
And maybe Mayor. Just one more quick update.
Yes.
Has someone mentioned in the Cal vehicle rentals? So if you did see the note the mayor sent, we've tried to be very out of the box with vehicle rentals, trying to keep everybody safe as far as workers, and keeping people confined to one vehicle, however long this goes on is a goal. We don't have enough trucks for that when we get the summer helpers. So we looked at renting, Sean and I spoke to, I believe it was Hertz, and it was like, I don't know, 1,200 to 1,500 a month for a work truck. So we had to come up with a better way, and then she tried to sell us on a lease. Well, oh, yeah, we can get you, you know, under 900, but then you've got all these lease constraints, which we didn't have to go to council with anyway. And then I just thought of calling a couple agencies who have had the unfortunate side effect of layoffs relative to COVID reduction in revenue. So we're going to work with Mercer Island on a relatively reasonably inexpensive rate to try to get a couple work trucks in here for the crew to then have space, two trucks. Not, we're not looking for the pride of their fleet, we just need to get a couple of rigs to get people riding around town, and we're working on a rental lease with that through August. But we expect it to be, kind of preliminary numbers are what their amortization is for replacement. So their 10-year replacement costs that, you know, Dana would have on our vehicles, my quick math, it's under 400 a month per truck. So we're, they're very flexible, we're flexible without, it's good for them to make a little revenue, good for us to find a reasonably inexpensive truck to drive around in that's sitting there doing nothing in first place. So Mercer Island is on board, and we're working on a rental. We hope to get that done really soon.
Thank you. Is there anything else in admin update? Oh, Councilmember Napland.
I had a quick question for Director Thomas. On the permits, I think you said 170 permits here to date, but that can't be single family, is it? I guess I, I, there's so many different types of permits. You know, there's.
170 residential units, so between single family and attached.
So we had budgeted for, I believe, 68.
Correct.
And so, in the door, if they all picked up, that'd be 170.
Correct.
Okay. Um, you anticipate them picking them up? I mean, are those, are those the ones that are, because we got a whole bunch at the end of last year, right?
Yeah, so that includes, so it includes permits submitted since 12/31/19. So it includes the 99.
Okay.
That were 12/31, and then the others are from January 1st moving forward.
Okay.
The 99 have been picked up. We will be issuing fee tickets this week for four of the buildings for Dubal Village. We don't know if they will pick them up this year, and we're not assuming that they will.
Okay.
So that leaves us just over, you know, 71 permits in that other category. And they're, the developer that we're working with that's submitting permits are averaging right now a few pre-sales a week, so about between six and 10 a month. So confidently, we could say that on average, they're going to pick up six to 10 a month.
So how many permits have been picked up and paid for of that number this year?
Under 30.
There's been less than 30 that we've received dollars for besides the initial.
Right.
Okay. Sorry, 170 just like blew my mind, so I had to get a better understanding on that. Okay. Thank you.
That's why we need more staffing and planning.
Thank you, Councilmember Napland.
Any other questions for administration? Okay. So seeing none, we will move on to presentations, which we do not have on tonight, public hearing, we do not have one. Unfinished business is Agenda Bill 20-26, City Attorney Services General Municipal Law Contract for Discussion and/or Decision. It sounds like everybody's got what they want out of the template, so I don't know how much more discussion you want to have on this, or if you would like to move it forward so we can continue the process. Councilmember Lingle.
The, again, repeating what I said at the Cal, we, the intent of working on a template was that the template be approved by council, which we just described as being, as occurring next meeting. And in the meantime, what I'd like the mayor to do is, working with the tent, it sounds like we have a lot of support for the template. So what I'd like you to do, Mayor, if, to wrap this up on the, the contract proposal, is look at the template, propose to us your final choices under the options, and there's already been work done to tighten up the scope of work in Exhibit A, so I, I don't think that that will be controversial in any way. So I, I just, you haven't really had time to study all the template choices. And, and so what I am requesting is that AB 20-26, come back at the last meeting with your final proposal of the firm and the contract that you want to use. I mean, with all your choices, so everything is done. I mean, we couldn't really, we really can't approve a firm with a template with all those options. We need to know what the final proposal was from you, really.
Well, I thought you were, I thought you guys were wanting to approve the template and have it approved by council so that it's.
Yeah, next meeting. Yeah. And then also, in a separate action, make our, make our, choose our, you know, do our vote on the, at AB 20-26.
Okay.
Because that, AB 20-26 would have to include your final contract with the selected options.
Okay. And so just so you know, we do have a council member that will not be at the next meeting and had rearranged a schedule to be at this meeting, expecting that we would be at the final point by now. So we will not bring, I won't bring forward the Madrona contract until we, unless we have a full council present. But, but just, but I can definitely bring, I think, you know, everyone's pretty much at consensus at the other part, so we can at least get that done. But I just want to be transparent that unless we've got all seven council members, I'm not going to ask for a vote on the Madrona contract.
That's, oh, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Because looking at what we did last Friday, it appears you anticipated some of this, because I went back and looked at, oh, I don't want to get disorganized here, but what, when I looked at the, the contract amendment that we approved last week, it appears that you, the purpose includes this last stage of negotiation and the funds within Madrona to get, to really wrap this up. So it seems like sequence-wise, timing-wise, we're still going to be good. And also, as you make your final choices, if you want input or whatever, it gives you the, the room to do that before we vote.
Okay. Not a problem. So we'll go ahead, unless there's somebody that really has a burning issue to, to move this tonight, we'll go ahead and move to the next agenda item, unless I hear objections. Oh, Councilmember Hoag.
So I, I guess, I, I want to make sure that I'm understanding it clearly, what Councilmember Lingle is wanting to see, but this is kind of what I was thinking that we would be doing is approving a blank template for the attorney, an attorney contract. That would mean that this would be an attorney contract we would use for any attorney, and then in a separate agenda bill, approving Madrona within that. Is that what you understand, Mayor? Because that's what I thought that the council had asked for like a couple meetings ago. So I just want to make sure, because this one that was in front of us has Madrona's name, it's not a, it's not a blank template.
Okay. And so I think I've got a little confusion here. So let's, I see what, what Councilmember Lingle is saying, so we'll, I think I'm fine with doing what she's saying and moving forward and doing that, doing it in that process. So let's go ahead and just, if that's okay with folks.
The city has. The only thing that might be good to talk about is this insurance. I mean, I personally would be good with two and two million or three and three million, but it'd be nice to know from our attorneys to if that's acceptable for them, if they have that. I don't know if we want to talk about it now or not, if we want to wait.
I'm fine with that. I would rather, you know, have know where the majority of councils at on that, so that I can just work with Madrona to do whatever needs to be done.
Okay.
So I guess with that, let's do a round robin poll on what folks would like to see. And I'll start with Councilmember Brad Nicky. Councilmember Brad Nicky, what's your insurance preference?
Are you talking 1 million, that, that option?
That's, that's one of the options on the table.
I was with what the recommendation was, the 1 million to 1 million aggregate, I was fine with that.
Okay. Councilmember Iyer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with the other recommendation of 2 million and 2 million.
Okay. Councilmember Napland?
2 million minimum.
Councilmember McHenry?
I'm, I'm comfortable with the 2 million as a minimum. If other people are feeling higher, you know, I guess we could evaluate as needed, but yeah, 2 million probably the lowest for me.
Okay. Councilmember Lingle?
Well, I just, I guess I would want three and three, and the reason is we already, you know, in all, in our past contract, the, and I actually think, I mean, Eileen, please correct me, but I think your aggregate right now is 3 million. Is that not correct?
So you're correct, Councilmember Lingle. We have 1 million claim and 3 million aggregate, and we've actually gotten some quotes for additional numbers, not all of the options, but several of them. And then also, your, the Kenyon decent was one and three.
Okay. Councilmember Remington?
I'm good with two and two.
Okay. And Councilmember Hoag?
Minimum two and two is my preference.
Okay. So that gives me a baseline, so thank you. And that's really probably the most difficult part to, to make sure that we've got taken care of. And so that gives me direction to move forward, so thank you. Moving on to ordinance AB 20-40, the 2019-2020 Budget Amendment and Restrictions for Discussion and/or Decision. And we'll go ahead and, I guess, the first question is, does council want to further discuss this, or would you like to take immediate action or move it on to the next meeting? Councilmember Lingle?
You know, the only issue with, with the budget now is I don't quite understand how the, the amendment that we did to the contract last Friday intersects with the budget amendment, if at all. But I thought I would at least ask that question, because, you know, we, we've had these unique expenses, and once we amend the budget, I don't know that the amended budget will suffice. Now, if the, if you're fine with that, Mayor, that I certainly will defer on that, because you're looking at your overall numbers, but I'm, I'm calling a. because you're looking at your overall numbers, but I'm, I'm calling attention to it, because what it could mean is down the road, as we're doing these restrictions, there's some moving around. And that's the only comment, really.
Okay. Ms. Mason, did you have a, a comment on that? You're more in the weeds.
So we, we brought the attorney services up to the two thousand nineteen levels. So I think that if we needed to add more further down the road, we're probably going to do another set of budget amendments, so we could do it at that time if needed.
Okay. So are there any other questions or concerns about the budget amendment as it stands? Okay, seeing none, it would be great for staff and administration to get this off the plate, so I would be happy to entertain a motion.
Mayor Mike Remington, I would move that council approve AB twenty dash forty ordinance, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget amendment, restrictions.
All right, we have a motion. Was that? Councilmember Iyer, second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, we should probably, I don't know if this will be unanimous, so we should probably do a roll call vote, so Ms. Wakeoff, I will let you take that away.
Councilmember Brad Nicky?
Aye.
Councilmember Iyer?
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry?
Aye.
Councilmember Remington?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lengel?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion passes.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to Agenda Bill twenty dash forty-one, an ordinance for utility service for occupancy, for discussion and/or decision. Ms. Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Laura Thomas, for the record. At the last meeting, we discussed the new policy, and we did receive some questions after that council meeting. I've included them in your agenda bill update, and so I'll go over them. And thank you for the questions also, council. So what, the first question is, how many water shut-offs did the city conduct each year? So we average between ten and twenty per month, so that's a hundred and twenty to about two hundred and forty per year. And that's obviously pre-COVID, if we start to see any issues with payments. Number two is, what if someone is living in an outbuilding shed without utilities, but the property does not have utilities? This would be a code enforcement issue. If the city received a complaint and/or the water was shut off, we would conduct an investigation similar to ten point two oh point oh five oh, and we would look at the terms of occupancy and premise as defined in the draft policy. And so I provided the definitions of occupancy, which means residing on the premise, not just necessarily in, I'll say, the main house, and being present on the premise for any purpose other than actively maintaining or proving the premise. And then premise is defined as land, real estate, tax parcel, or a lot in any portion thereof, whether improved or unimproved. The third question that we received is essentially, you know, what happens when the utilities are cut off for non-payment of bills? The property is already getting fines from the utility provider for the shut-off. It looks like enforcement action under the ordinance is taken approximately fifteen days after utilities are not functioning. Then ten days later, it's deemed unfit for occupancy. Just trying to figure out what the logistics of that. So again, the first step would be an investigation. The first thing the city would do is determine if the premises obviously occupied. If the premise is not occupied, the city would use its existing policy, reach out and write and attempt, an attempt to collect the debt. If we believe the premise is occupied, the city would conduct an investigation, which is in ten point two oh point oh five oh, and this would then go to the building official that would potentially or likely issue notice of violation. Administration has reached out to the Building Utility Department to review the policy for consistency with the existing policy and general code enforcement review. We haven't received any information back yet from the department, so I'm still waiting for that, but we'll get that information to you as well when we receive it. Are there any other follow-up questions?
Councilmember Iyer?
So we, you were saying ten to twenty a month shut-offs, is that what I heard? Who?
Oh, she said correct, yes, correct.
Have we, have we looked at all, have we, and what's, what are we looking at for a number of accounts that we have? Do we have an idea of that?
How many accounts, like how many?
How many water accounts we have?
How many water accounts? The last time I was more involved with it, we had about twenty-four hundred, twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred.
It'd be interesting to just, I guess, informally, see if we can have an, if we get an idea of, you know, where we're at in terms of, I mean, understanding where we're at in terms of the scale at which we do shut-offs. I mean, twenty a month, that sounds like a lot for twenty-eight hundred users. And I mean, this, this is an important ask, code, obviously for other reasons, but also it kind of highlights the, you know, the, the the utility costs are expensive here in Duval, so I think it's, you know, whether that plays a role is, is kind of an interesting, and how that affects folks that are, you know, on their luck and understanding our shut-offs, because I think it's, this ordinance in terms of the steps that happen afterwards, I mean, that's an important thing to consider, so.
Councilmember Iyer, I can check with a couple of cities and get that information back, so we can see, like, how do we compare?
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting, I mean, hopefully it's an informal thing that wouldn't be too much of a deep dive, just to get a, some cons, a concept of the frequency of shut-offs, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I can say, just before Councilmember Napland goes, just to point out that our utility billing clerk, Stephanie Goodwin, when people, people do fall behind, she calls and reaches out and provides resources to folks. I think, you know, another thing that we should break down in that data, Ms. Thomas, is how many are due to moves and non-moves? Because there's a lot of shut-offs for people that move, and people that don't pay, you know, people that don't pay their bills or don't get their bills till later on. So that I think we should have, you know, to get a truer sense of what that looks like, we should get that breakdown as well. Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I thought that number sounded high too, but your explanation that it could be moves and different things like that, I, I hope that's the case. I do remember, when I first got on council, someone I knew had their utilities shut off, and there was confusion in the way the bills were presented, like the color of the bill, and the bill only showed how much was past due, so they paid that, but didn't realize they also still owed a new, but then it still got shut off because they weren't up to zero. I don't know, it was very confusing, so the shut-off for them was not because they, they weren't going to pay it or thought, there was a confusion about paying it. And I remember that when we drilled down into it, it, it was confusing, the way the bills were done. So I just want to make sure, that does seem like a high number, and just if we could try to understand on some of these, when people aren't paying, if, if there is a confusion, or somehow the way we're presenting the bills, because, I mean, now we have a whole nother penalty added on top. I mean, to get your water turned back on, it's more than just the past due, now you've got a big fine, and then, you know, potentially you'd be evicted from your home, and more fines. I just, I just want to make sure that we don't create a system that is even more of a burden for people who are either struggling or just got confused.
Yep. And the, the whole billing situation is something that's been kind of an ongoing internal conversation of how we, how we can clarify that, and I think, you know, in general, having a different billing system could help out significantly with that, especially with more and more utilities are, you can go online and see everything, so you're not just getting a paper bill. That self-service tool is a huge help in people understanding what they owe and what they don't owe. So those are, you know, definitely part of the ongoing discussions with administration on how we improve that process. But it's a, but it's a point well taken, I mean, that, that can definitely be an issue and a challenge. Councilmember Iyer?
Just one last thing, I'm definitely, and to kind of connect this over to something else, I know we're working on the sewer, sewer comp plan and the utility rate study, and just to see, see where we're at, I think some of the helpful things that, hopefully that'll be at least part of the conversation, would be looking at comparables of where we're at with other cities in the area, so, okay.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pretend Remington?
I think we all understand the key reason this came forward, that if we have a, a building, a living unit that's vacant, that we don't want somebody just moving in there, and it gives the police a tool to be able to say, you know, city a tool to say you can't live here. So we're really looking at the unintended consequences, what else might affect this. So a couple that came up when I was talking to some folks, they wanted to know if, with accessory dwelling units or tiny homes, whether a compost toilet would ever be permitted in the first place, and how would this type of ordinance affect that? So I hope it's not a crappy question, but I'd ask it.
So I can not fully answer it, with the exception of, say, and usually composting toilets are toilets that are used on larger lots, because technically it goes into a small-ish area, and so you see that probably more in a rural context than a suburban or urban context. But as part of, you know, an accessory dwelling unit policy update, we could look at, like, say, we have a lot that's, you know, in one of our areas of town where there's like a half acre lot or something, could we then do a composting toilet? So I'll talk with Public Works about that. I did get a comment from Director Mason. She said that the majority of our turn-offs are repeat turn-offs.
Well, thank you.
So to go back, I, what I'll do is I'll look at a couple of other cities to see what their turn-off kind of rate is proportionally, so I'll be able to come up with a, a population to turn off. I'll also look at, you know, move in, move out, I'll look at, and see if we can screen any special circumstances that happen with these turn-offs. And then I think I'll also bring back what our current process for billing is, so that we can have a better idea, since we have some new council members. And then we'll talk to Public Works about how this might play into the sewer comp plan update. The one thing that I can tell you is that your rate is in general going to be higher for those that, that don't regularly pay, so you're somehow going to be subsidizing those that can't pay, or that you're writing off that debt, or it's gone to collections. Steve and I have had this conversation before over the last ten years. Steve, did you want to weigh in at all really quick?
So just back to Councilmember Remington's question on incinerator toilets, current code says you must connect to Santer Sewer. So you guys can always change code, but right now, if somebody came in for a tiny home, one, you've got to get a permit, and stick frame permits are normally not what people have in a tiny home, as they are traditionally roller, right, they're on wheels, so they are built and licensed by L and I, which does not qualify you for stick frame foundations, so we have a little bit of tiny homes aren't right now what, you know, the, the easiest thing to permit as they come off. You can build one tiny home stick frame, that looks just like one on wheels, but it's permitted under review and inspection and everything else, so food for thought on that, but yes, you would have to hook the sewer at this point.
Thank you. So it looks like folks want us to bring this back to the next meeting with more info, so we can do that. Unless there's objection, we'll move on to new business, Agenda Bill twenty dash fifty, and this is the Agenda Bill regarding civil emergencies, and I will go ahead and share my screen with this, and Mr. Tozer is likely to step in at any time, or, and welcome to step in at any time to help discuss this topic. So as I kind of touched on before, as cities have experienced riots and looting, we were looking at our code and looking at what our options are for law enforcement and for administration to help protect our communities and our businesses, and while state law gives mayors broad powers under emergencies, we don't have anything currently in our emergency management plan or our DMC that specifies what a civil emergency is. We have regular emergencies, it's all hazards. And so through talking with our city attorney, it was determined that we need to move forward with an ordinance that specifies what a civil emergency is, and as I mentioned before, there are lots of cities like ours that didn't have these in place until this week. And so we will be asking for approval of this, this evening, so that if we do end up in a situation that our police department can act appropriately. So this one, what this actually does is it creates an entire new chapter of code, six dot three zero, titled Civil Emergency. And just in general, you know, this is obviously spurred by recent local and national events, and making sure that we have the tools as a city to manage these things. So for purposes of the chapter, a civil emergency is a riot, unlawful assembly, insurrection, enemy attack, sabotage, or other hostile action, or a natural or human-caused disaster, including firestorm, explosion, earthquake, volcanic disturbance, or other natural causes. To be clear, this, a civil emergency is not something to be taken lightly, and it really is about life and property begin, beginning to be at risk. So what this does is it just simply clarifies my, any, well, any mayor in the city's authoris, authority to issue a civil emergency policy based on imminent threat to public, oops, I see a typo here, it says public peach, but it's public health, safety, and welfare of our community. These orders can include a curfew and whole or in part, closure of public places, et cetera. And then if, if we do have to do an order, then the orders are presented to council to ratify, modify, or reject within forty-eight hours after presented by the mayor, you guys already have that tonight, as far as the emergency declaration, so you can take action on that, although it's not a formal Agenda Bill. So I don't know who's had time to read the, the actual ordinance, but, you know, it's, it's, this is very much in line with what other cities have been doing, and so with that, I would like to open it up to Ms. Kepfer, and if she's still online, or Ms. Soto, and Mr. Tozer to add some more information to this. And I can't see everybody.
So, hi, this is Anne Marie.
Hi, Anne Marie.
Okay, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. As the mayor mentioned, a lot of cities are in the same position. You know, some cities did have language in their codes that allowed them to take these types of actions, but Duval didn't, so this is the, what we brought forth, so that you will be able to take the actions that are needed when we're facing this type of emergency. And again, this is something that's really new to all of us. You know, I don't think any of us expected that this is where we would be at the start of the year, but like the mayor mentioned, a lot of cities are having to adopt these types of ordinances really quickly. In fact, I know that the city of Covington adopted a very similar ordinance just this afternoon, so this is, this is where we're at at this point. So if you have any other specific questions about the ordinance and some of the terms of it, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I will let you guys discuss further.
And I would like, I, I did just want to note that Covington had issues last night. So they had looting and what have you last night, and they didn't have the tools necessary to manage what was going on in their community.
Yeah, and it's Sean, CEO of Duval, and to Anne Marie and the mayor's point. So just in, over the weekend, and a lot of these developed yesterday, Monday, Seattle, Bellevue, Linwood, Auburn, Redmond, Tukwella, Mercer Island, Renton, and Covington all have some sort of civil emergency or curfews in in place and in effect. I know Redmond was also considering as well, again, just kind of due to some generalized threats. And again, there's probably others on the list, but that was as of last night, and then some of it developed last night. So it is just a very fast-moving and fluid situation. People are seeing that need to have that tool in the toolbox.
And I will add too, you know, I have had businesses contact me in the last 24 hours and ask for a curfew. And we've had extensive conversations with our police department on this issue, some of which, you know, I'm happy to talk to people offline, but not in a public setting on because there are agitators that are watching the activities of government, and I want to make sure that we we maintain our our safety. But, you know, this is, this is general, this is pretty basic overall. And so I would really request that council suspend your procedures to move this forward tonight so that if we have any issues over the next two weeks, that we can actually have the tools necessary to manage them. And then discussion.
Mayor Mike Remington?
Mayor President Remington?
Mayor, could you bring up the Agenda Bill last paragraph again? That was the one that had the typo in it as well.
Okay, hold on. Sorry, and my new computer is not touchscreen, so this gets a little tricky, so I apologize. I'm so used to touchscreen these days. I can see better, and I can read my documents, but the touchscreen is missing. Okay.
Here we are.
Yep.
It would just a suggestion, you know, we talked about having council act within 48 hours, which makes perfectly good sense. I might suggest on that last sentence that we, where it says, "If the mayor declares such orders, the council will be presented." And have it say, "If the mayor declares such orders, the council within 24 hours will be presented." It's such a big thing to declare a civil emergency, and we don't want to, you know, we want you to have the tools, and the police chief. So this makes perfectly good sense. I think any good set of ordinances would include this and give us the tools we need. But I think it's such a big thing, it would make sense that rather than waiting three or four or five days or a week to to present it to council, that it would come forward, and maybe 24 is is a rush. But it just makes sense that if we're going to make this declaration, that council be notified that, and that we have opportunity, of course, to ratify, modify, or reject.
Yeah.
It just seemed like there was a blank there that it just says it'll be presented. It doesn't say when it'll be presented. You know, it could be two weeks. So it just made sense to me if.
Yeah.
One thing just to mention, it might be more helpful to have language that gives you a little bit more flexibility because if you're truly in an emergency, there might not be the ability to provide those types of documents to the council. So maybe you could say something as soon as is reasonably practicable or practical to send the the order to the council. And what I've seen some cities doing is they're putting in that their council has time to act on order no later than their next regularly scheduled meeting. And again, you know, if you have really stringent time restrictions in your ordinance, and there's an emergency where you're not able to meet, or you're not able to provide the order to the council, then it might result in the order being, going away, and you might really need it. So that's just something to consider if you want to tinker with the language a little bit to give you a little bit more flexibility.
And to be clear, I was reading, you know, this has come up very fast. So as I was reading the 48 hours, is is council taking action on special meeting, and as I did today, as soon as I, you know, I let folks know that it was coming today. And so that that order's signed. So in general, in most circumstances, you're going to have the order immediately after it's signed, because that's part of the process, is making sure you're informed. So I'm okay with the notification within 24 hours, Anne Marie, because we are small, and so typically it's a mayor that's going to be doing it. But to the point of ratification, I think it does make sense to have it as soon as the next regularly scheduled or special scheduled council meeting or something like that. And if we, if we could get amended language quickly, that would be helpful, too.
And and one quick thing, and again, this might be, might be my misunderstanding, but I just wanted to make clear in the Agenda Bill that the order would be effective immediately upon the declaration, and it's confirmed or modified by the council, but it is already effective. So it's not an approval per se, it's their opportunity to modify, reject, or otherwise. Is that, is that a correct understanding? So I thought the wording of the the last bit of that Agenda Bill was just a little unclear as to whether they were the ones ratifying and approving that that order, or whether it's in effect until it is modified or changed. It was in the Agenda Bill, I think, not actually in the.
Yeah, so in the ordinance. Let's see, I'm just looking through the ordinance.
So look at the draft section 6.30.020 subsection D. That is where it says at the, on page two of the exhibit. So at the end of that section, it says that so it says, "Provided however that any such order shall at the earliest practicable time be presented to the city council for ratification, confirmation, modification, or rejection." Then it says that the council shall endeavor to act on any order within 48 hours of it being presented to the city council by the mayor. So you could, that language does give you some flexibility, but at the same time, you know, what does endeavor within 20, 48 hours mean? If you want to have some sort of deadline so that you put a little bit more parameters on it, you can do that. But this does give you some flexibility. If you want to add language in about when the mayor must present it, you would do that under the the first line there, or the second line that says, "Provided however that any such order shall at the earliest practicable practical time be presented to the city council." You would say, "Provided however that any such orders shall be presented to the city council within 24 hours for ratification, confirmation, et cetera."
And coming from somebody who's been on both council and the mayor's side, I do not have an issue at all with amending to say 24 hours. And then perhaps what we do is modify that last line to say, "The council shall endeavor to act on any order at their next regular or special scheduled council meeting."
Or as a suggested alternative, you could say, "The city council shall endeavor to act on any order within 48 hours, but no later than the next regularly scheduled council meeting."
That, that definitely worked for me. How do others feel about that?
Like it?
Anne Marie, I just had a quick question.
Please, no, I've got, I've got my screen shared, so it's hard for me to see all of you, so I'm going to open you up. Sorry about that.
No worries. I really like that wording, and I support that. I have a few other comments or questions, but if you're trying to get a consensus on that one item first, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm trying to get consensus on that item, and because I'm sharing my screen, I have to toggle. Councilmember Iyer?
Yeah, so, you know, I just want to start out by saying, you know, I'm not making these comments to be divisive or to question anyone's integrity or anything along that lines. And by no means do I want this to evolve into a personal personal process. So this, that being said, you know, I, you know, I think this is some, this is some very serious code. This is some very serious proposals to change the the rules here in Duval that greatly affect the public and the public's rights and the power of the mayor to assert authority over individuals who live in this city. This being said, as a citizen, I am, as a citizen and an elected official, you know, my job is to take the information I have and move forward with that. And I just I think this is a, a rush to, to take action. I think there are tools in the toolbox, which we have used up till this point, that can do many of these things. And I deal with when you work at a city, or I think any times you work for an agency that's larger than, you know, even even a homeowner, deals with risk. And and my perception of the risk is not great enough to make such a haste, hastily decision, haste, hastily decision, I guess. I don't know if I should put that. But I have great concerns over just the level of authority that's provided here. And I don't think it fits where we're at. So with that being said, I don't right now support this order as a rushed process. I think it's a fine conversation to have that involves the public. I also, in reading the emergency order, with all due respect, I don't think that there is an imminent threat of death to citizens or staff. I'm just, let me finish. I, please, I just want to say in my piece, if you, and I can't, I, as a, as a representative and council, I can't go off of when someone says, "Trust me, it's scary." That's not enough for me as a representative, and it shouldn't be.
So I'm going to take a break.
So I, as the council member.
Hold on, Councilmember Remington, I'm going to let you take over for a moment with the conversation, and I'm going to call our police chief who's on the street right now to see if he can join this call to get his perspective.
Okay, am I done? Am I cut off now?
No, you go ahead and keep talking, but I think it's very important that the police chief weigh in on this conversation with the direction it's going, so I'm going.
I'm just making a, and this is what I wanted to avoid. I don't want this to become a you know, that's my role as a citizen and as elected official. I, I have the right and the responsibility to dissent when my, when I feel like it's a reasonable, when unreasonable things are being asked of me. And I think that's the case, so.
So I, I don't disagree.
I will, I, okay, with that, I will stop and acqui, and allow you to have the floor if you are next to speak.
No, I want other council members to speak to this, but it's very important because the police chief is a huge part of this process. And the police department is asking for this. So and our attorneys also recommended it. So I will call the police chief right now and see if we can get him on the line to talk to council about his perspective on this.
So while the mayor is working to get the police chief on and has asked me to help continue the conversation, it looks like there's other council members that would like to speak. So thank you to Councilmember Iyer, Councilmember Brudniky, and then Councilmember Lengel.
Yes, I think having this conversation and taking an action to do something as a business owner in the community, and having seen what has transpired in the last two days. And I, and I have, in the last few weeks, going out, experienced things that were very scary just for me. And I think that having things in place to help us, to help our public safety, to do the best job they can to protect our citizens, is important. So I'm, I think, you know, moving, it's a, it's a pretty, as Councilmember Iyer said, it is a pretty serious piece of legislation we're looking at here. But we are dealing with some extreme situations. And I will tell you that when I saw what was going on and wondering, like, as a person walking through my town, or the businesses downtown, or even my own personal business, wondering like, how, how well are we prepared? Should anything leaked over into our community? So I would definitely want to make sure we work through this and have the tools that our, our police have the right tools that they can protect our citizens.
Thank you. Councilmember Lengel?
Oh, I'm unmuted. Good. I, I guess I have a little different perspective. I've, I've worked in places that are pretty dangerous compared to Duval for sure. And I've been in situations where there was civil unrest and violence. And so I, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can do something that achieves the core things that, that we need right now on, you know, on an interim basis so that we can really look at this in in more detail. I don't, I don't know if that's possible, but I, I am sensitive to the fact that with, with the situation, I mean, it's not, it's not clear cut either way, right? We have this very uncertain environment. I don't totally understand what has happened around the small protests in Duval, and that's probably part of my hesitation. So I guess that's all I really wanted to say about it. I mean, I understand why there's a place for this type of thing. I do, having been in these other situations. I just don't have a, a way to judge where Duval really is as far as risk. And I, I just wish I had more information, and maybe Chief Hurt, when he gets online, can describe what incidences have transpired.
So forward. So there are some privileged, there is definitely privileged information regard, and within the law enforcement and mayor's communities that has been shared with us. And this is not saying we're going to go and do a curfew. It's saying that this is happening all around us. And if we don't have the tools in place, from being very close to someone that was very involved in what happened in Seattle this weekend, when the bad people decide to come, we don't have time to hold an emergency council meeting. We don't have time to do these things. And as, as Ms. Kepfer pointed out, when we were drafting this, is that not having this ordinance in place, if we have something happen in the next few days, it's not enforceable. So there are no tools for the police chief to do what's necessary. So he is trying to call in, hopefully, you know, I'd like folks to hear from other folks on this issue as well. And again, you know, multiple cities are in the same position. Isicla literally drafted their ordinances during their council meeting and got them approved. So I appreciate dissent. That said, public safety and having the tools necessary to manage things is very important. And I can tell you, I've been getting emails all day from people concerned about the people with the automatic weapons that were standing outside businesses last night. And concerns from protesters about safety. So, you know, I want to hear from the other council members as well, but that's, you know, this is. And concerns from protesters about safety. So, you know, I want to hear from the other council members as well, but that's, you know, this is, this is one of those times where we're backed into a corner because our policies are not complete. Has, what other council members have not spoken yet? Henry?
I, so I have a few points in this that I wanted to hit on and then more of a holistic opinion, I guess, about all of it. So at the top of the chapter in the first paragraph. So this basically comes down to the judgment and the mayor, and I couldn't help but think of like the fireworks ordinance, emergency ordinance that we had worked on. And I wondered what other cities did. Is it always just the mayor or can it also be in cooperation with the police chief or other community leaders, something like that, so that it's not always just one person's decision? I don't want to make it a cumbersome process. I understand it needs to be expedited quickly. So
And quick answer to that, you know, in general, whenever a mayor declares a state of emergency, it is in consultation with law enforcement and all relevant staff, in particular, the Director of Emergency Management. Often what happens is that the Director of Emergency Management recommends that the executive, whether it's at the city level or city manager level, or county executive or county commissioner level approve and move forward with declarations of emergency. Declaring, to my experience, and I have never experienced a declaration of emergency being issued without both proper legal review and appropriate appropriate conversations and consultation with staff. When we do things, for example, just working on this the last two days, it involved our emergency manager, our city attorney, and the entire command staff of the police department. So, yeah.
Yeah, no problem. I just was wondering, as it's worded now, it's just in the judgment of the mayor. So I'm wondering if we could add some of that language that you just used to make it more clear that it's a collaborative process and not just one person's choice?
If somebody wants to put an amendment on that now, that's, that's fine. I mean, ultimately, I mean, the way the law works as well is ultimately the mayor's in charge of the emergency. The mayor typically appoints, you know, we have to have the Director of Emergency Management. And in most situations, most elected officials defer to their emergency manager and their police chief on what to do. So it's, it's certainly not a problem to make a quick amendment and add that in. But that is just, you know, it's kind of superfluous because it's standard practice in emergency management.
I was just wondering if, with the language, maybe Ms. Soto could help us with this, but for example, the language, something like under the, I don't know how to word this, under the advisement from a police chief or emergency manager, I don't know what the appropriate language would be there.
Okay. I thought I was muted the whole time. Oops. My ducks weren't barking. So I guess the question is gonna be depending on the type of emergency, it might be a different person who needs to be consulted, right? So if you're dealing with something where you're dealing with potential crimes, you would obviously want to consult with the police chief. If you're dealing with something that might be related to a flood, you might be talking to someone other than the police chief. So I guess I wouldn't want to be too specific in the ordinance and not give you the right tools to be able to take action in that specific emergency, but you could do something where you do just say with the police chief that that's what you want, or you could say in consultation with appropriate staff or staff appropriate for the emergency at issue or something like that. So just let me know what way you're leaning. If you want me to craft some language, I can tinker something up real quick. Just, I did send you guys some proposed amended language for the 24 hours piece. I sent that an email just a few minutes ago, so I can do the same thing for this. I just need to know what direction you want to go.
Green share right now for folks. So Councilmember, I think, actually, Mr. Tozer was trying to to speak as well. So if Councilmember McHenry, is it okay if he gives his feedback and then?
Yeah, just really, really quick, I just wanted to say that the latter, you know, the last thing you said, it seemed a little more open to interpretation. I think just the police chief very specific, but that's
Yeah, if you
Mr. Tozer?
Yeah, if, if you guys don't mind. So, yeah, I think there's a few different points here, and I think the first one is Councilmember McHenry is, is still, and it's just, it's a general question. There's still a delegation of authority to a legal person, and that is not by committee or by group or by individual. There is a designated and legal executive of the city in any fashion, whether it's a manager or something or other, or otherwise. But I think that's why you see it actually be the decision of an individual. Obviously, that individual mayor or a city manager or other executive needs to be doing that consultation with their public safety. And that, that it could include public works directors, it includes fire departments. Again, we're not talking about Duval specific necessarily, but, and I can tell you, at least in this specific instance, there was, there was a really good discussion earlier today about implementation of a curfew and what conditions those would be and whether we necessitated that type of an action right now, rather than developing the right tool to have available. And I think there was zero, there was zero debate about whether we needed that tool in the right instance. And again, we didn't get to, we didn't arrive at the opinion that we needed that today or tonight. But again, taking in all the information that we're seeing and, and the trends that are going on, making sure that we were prepared and positioned well. If something, I mean, this is a year of firsts for all of us. And, and again, who knows whether we end up with a bunch of people here that we don't expect and to not have the ability to kind of take the appropriate action. That's, that's sort of where we were as a group. So definitely, this was in consultation with and developed by kind of a discussion on our end. And I understand that was still rushed and there, I totally understand concerns about that. But at least trying to fill in a little bit of that information. And again, everything always goes back to who has the authority or who is actually the legal legal responsibility. And so we can say that it needs to be in consultation with, but again, there's still one person who the buck stops with anywhere on the line. So
The mayor is the only one that can sign an emergency authorization, even if it's written by somebody else in the city. The mayor is the only one in the city with authority, period. And what not moving this forward tonight would actually hinder that ability. So Chief Hurt is on the line. Councilmember Iyer has his hand up. And so Councilmember Iyer, I would like you to your questions or comments for Chief Hurt so that he can address them as our chief law enforcement officer in the city.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke my piece to the council and stated that my concern is that, and as I started the beginning of this, I know that we've had some heated discussions in the past and folks have got, you know, it's been very personal, but, and and you know, I state these things with all due respect to you, to police chief and, and the mayor. But I think while there could be a case made for, you know, the need for these ordinances, I think the emergency nature of them, I, I, I don't you know, I've heard some anecdotal information about, it sounds like something that happened yesterday, but it's, it's privileged. And I don't think that we are at a state that we need to rush an emergency change, significant emergency change through our code. I give all my support to the police and the city to do everything they need to do. But I feel like this is premature. I feel like Covington, Issaquah, Kirkland, all those places have significant retail presence that they can targets for whatever. They're off the freeway. That's what makes them a significant target for protesters and/or for shenanigans. I think that Duval's unique geography and lack of density makes it unlikely that this will be an event. And, you know, that, and I think that there are enough tools in the toolbox to get us through this event without such emergency actions to change, fundamentally change code on a, you know, essentially on a, you know, with the representatives of the citizens of Duval having essentially three hours to make the decision and being pressured as if, I mean, this is the type of, what I see, this is the type of ordinance that you bring. If there was literally somebody breaking windows last night. This is, that's the state that you're in. I don't think we're there. I live right next to downtown. I know, I know there's a lot of folks that live a ways from downtown. Don't have to listen to traffic, don't walk down there. I live down, right down here. I'm a one throw away. I can hear the Duval Tower. So it's not lost on me if we think downtown is the place to be. So that's where I'm at. And I just, I'm not necessarily, you know, I don't necessarily think that have an issue with updating the code. And if this is something that's, that's other municipalities have in place to, to do. And I think it's a good conversation to have, but I think it needs to involve the public and I think it needs to be well thought out. So that's where I'm at.
So Chief Hurt, you've now heard what we heard earlier, and I thought this was important for you to address as the chief law enforcement officer of the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Iyer. I don't think the position we're in right now. And I did catch what Sean had to say right before I came on, right before I started to be addressed. And I agree with what he said. We, we had a meeting. We've had meetings for the last two days. We've talked about the pros and the cons. Yes, things are happening around us. Are we at a point today that we should have put a curfew in place? No, we are not. I appreciate what you had to say, Councilmember Iyer, about, you know, the difference between Duval and other cities. We are getting intel, however, that these groups are starting to target communities, suburbs, and not specifically businesses. They're now going into the neighborhoods. So what I'm looking for is a tool that if something happens and things turn to chaos, yes, I can call in resources. I have no doubt about that. How, how long will it take for them to get here? I'm not sure. I mean, this is going on all over in the county. I'm not sure. The only tool really, and you, you, you made reference to tools. I'm not really sure what you're talking about, but the one tool that I can guarantee I can use to try and disperse everyone and keep everyone safe is a curfew. I'm not suggesting we need it tonight. I can't tell you if we'll need it tomorrow. I just would appreciate the, the fact that we have that tool as a law enforcement agency available to us if we felt we got to the point where we needed it and not have to wait until it's too late. I hope, I hope that makes sense for everybody.
Thank you, Chief. Other council members? Councilmember Nathland?
I made myself a little list of questions. I, I went and looked at what other cities have done and have put in ordinance, have something in code, and most of them had a time limit. So it just feels like we're always in this perpetual state of emergency exposure to it. And so the, the other, one of the other ones said, it's 48 hours, then it ends. So it's not this open ended, you know, I've declared a state of emergency. You have a term. If it needs to be extended beyond 48 hours, it comes to council to extend it. But it's really just a limited term. And then the other thing is it just feels like some of this stuff overlaps with the state law. And so I, I just never, I don't like adding code that's already taken care of somewhere else. That's just, it just makes things confusing. So anyway, I mean, we already have provisions for natural disasters, snowstorms. So I just, I wasn't really sure. And then the proclamation portion mentions COVID coronavirus. And so I'm trying to understand, is this about coronavirus? Are we declaring a state of emergency to extend for the coronavirus emergency? Or is this just about the protesting and the riots? It, it was kind of unclear. It felt like soap creep a little bit because it was mentioning that as well. And then in some of the other ones I saw, there was an exception to curfew. So it was very clear that if you needed to go to work, if you were a nurse or this, if you had places to go, you, you can go. I mean, this is not going to interfere with, I guess, essential things you need to get done. And then I felt very uncomfortable with item D under actions which may be taken. It's just a completely open end, whatever. Such other orders are imminently necessary. I, that's so open ended. I, that I completely do not feel comfortable with something that is not defined, just a completely open ended, whatever you feel is necessary. That I, I think for us to pass this, we need to know exactly what we're allowing. And that's, I do not feel comfortable with that. And the final thing is under the violation, it doesn't really define what kind of like what you're breaking. And so other cities described it as a misdemeanor. And I don't, I don't know exactly, I don't understand those terms fully to understand, you know, what is the most appropriate one. But it seems like if you are charged with something, I would, I would want to know what type of a charge it is, I guess, not just jail or dollar amount. So those were kind of some of the things that I noticed. But I have similar concerns. I mean, if, if this is approved, it would be, I would only feel comfortable having a very limited term. And then we come back and we look at what other cities do and contemplate because changing code and giving much greater authority is something I take very seriously. And I would really like to, you know, if we did something, it'd have to be very short term. And then we would have a chance to come back and, you know, look, see what other cities are doing and have a debrief before it becomes permanent in code forever. I just, I don't like major major code changes. So that's just how I feel. And thank you, Councilmember Iyer, for speaking up. I, I'm sure that was difficult, but I, I concur with a lot of what you said. So
So Mr. Tozer, do you want to address a little bit about emergency management structure and roles and responsibilities when it comes to these events? Because I think that's, that's part of what's missing here is the difference between being in an emergency and the difference between normal government operations.
I actually would, is there any way someone could answer the questions that I had?
You had a long list of them. You know, in general, we, we could put a time limit in most, in all emergency proclamations, no matter who puts it out, you decide when the time is over for that. So, you know, in general, you know, I think I should probably let Ms. Soto address some of these issues. Ms. Kepner is the one that has put the work into this. And again, I cannot reiterate enough that multiple cities have just done the exact same thing that we've done that we're asking you to do, only they didn't even have an ordinance in, in front of them before their council meeting. So Ms. Soto, and then I know that Sean and Steve, Sean, Mr. Tozer and Chief Hurt probably have more to add to this conversation.
So I think the only thing that I have to add is, you know, the question was, that was posed yesterday, or I think it was yesterday, or maybe it was today, was about having a curfew. If, and then what would the enforcement mechanism be for that curfew? And your code does not provide that type of authority at this time. So if you want to have the authority to set curfews and to provide some sort of enforcement of that curfew, rather than just say, please stay home and just asking people to respect that without any sort of enforcement mechanism, then you really do need to have something in your code. Whether or not you want to do that. or not you want to do that, that is totally up to the council. You could do something where you're not doing it in your, in your actual municipal code. You could adopt an ordinance that provides for this type of authority. You could put some sort of time parameters on how long that ordinance would be in effect. You could do that. Your other option would be to adopt something similar to what is in front of you right now. Or as Councilmember Iyer has mentioned, you do have other tools. And the police chief also recognized that there are other tools. There are tools like enforcing through things such as crimes for failure to disperse or for rioting. I think the concern with those, relying solely on those tools, and the police chief can speak to this if he, if he would like to add to it. But I think the concern is that when you have things like the rioting and the, the failure to disperse crimes, you actually have to wait for someone to actually commit those crimes to be able to tell them to leave or to arrest them. What I think the police department is looking for is a way to even stop those things from potentially happening. So again, whether or not you want to adopt this ordinance or adopt an ordinance that has this type of authority, it's really just going to depend on, do you want to have more tools or not? It doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to be implemented. It doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, after there's a vote, then the council or then the mayor is going to declare a proclamation right away. I think it's just, if there is a need for it, then will there be time to take the appropriate action to go through the proper channels with the council? So again, ultimately, it's the city council's decision. But if you want to have the authority to set curfews and to have enforcement of those curfews, then you're really going to need to do that by ordinance.
Councilmember Lingle?
I've, I've really appreciated this conversation because it's helped me understand things a lot better. Yeah, I just want to confirm something with Chief Hurt, if I may. It, it really sounds like the, the, the piece that is so critical to you is, is the ability to set a curfew. And so one of the issues we have, I guess, is, or I won't say, one of the, one of the pieces of this dialogue is that this is a much more detailed thing than just establishing your authority to set curfews. Because that sounds like the thing you really feel like you need. Am I understanding that correctly?
Sure, am I on?
Okay. So, so it, it, to just build from there to what Ms. Soto has said, I'm asking this as a question. I'm not, could we then do an ordinance that allows us to, allows a curfew to be established with a timeframe, and then come back and look at this as a code amendment where there's the time for more, I don't want to use the word like investigation, but more where we have time to really digest it. Because if the, if the critical thing right now is that Chief Hurt needs the ability to, for the mayor to set a curfew, if that's like the core issue, we could do that by ordinance now and then come back with more discussion and more understanding, frankly, about all the other provisions in, that might be in a code. But I, because I want, I want the chief to have a tool he needs. But there's a lot of stuff in this code change. And I'm not saying I'd even be opposed to all those things. I'm just trying to get this distilled down so we can make a decision and he can have immediately what he needs. I'll end there.
So, can I speak?
Absolutely. Please do, Chief Hurt.
So, yeah, I, I wanted to touch on what Ms. Soto was saying. So yes, there are other tools. And maybe that's what Councilmember Iyer was alluding to, was, you know, there's, there is incitement to riot, there is failure to disperse, there's disorderly conduct, there's, you know, if somebody's breaking a window, all those things. In those situ, and those tools we can use, yes. The concern that I have as a chief is that I have to start identifying the people that are causing the problems. And I have to now take all of my staff that are here and available and putting hands on people and, and putting them, putting them under arrest and taking them down to the police department or to another jail location. And now I have no cops in town. It, it, I, don't get me wrong, the curfew is not so we can make mass arrests. A curfew is so we can disperse everyone at the same time without having to identify who the problem maker is. It's, it's to prevent further property damage and to protect the life and safety of everyone involved. It's just, it's a tool that we can use. We can line up 10 officers and say, it's curfew time, we're pushing everybody out. Everybody go home. We don't, we don't have the time or the resources to try and identify one or five people that are causing the problem. Does that make sense to everybody?
So Chief, I'll ask you to, I think what Councilmember Lingle was getting at is just approving our, the curfew part of the ordinance. Do you have any comments on needing the necessity for a civil unrest, unrest ordinance and declaration in order to be able to implement a curfew? Or does Ms. Soto have any comments on that? And how that affects your ability as a law enforcement officer to act?
I think Ms. Soto.
Because civil unrest is more than curfew.
Right now, and I, I agree with most everything that's been said. I am fine with a curfew. I am fine with it sunsetting in a week. I'm fine with it if, if we just want to do it for, for, for two weeks and at that point reevaluate it at the next council meeting. I, I'm fine with all that. I, I don't need a permanent solution right now. I need a temporary solution that, that I can quickly restore peace and order in Duval if I need to do it. But that's all I'm asking for.
All right. Councilmember McHenry?
So hearing every, or what at least most people have been saying, I'm getting the feeling that many of us would be in favor of doing something temporary. And I don't know that we need to keep going through all of these because I do have a couple other comments. But I'm wondering, instead of continuing to go through it, the council was leaning toward doing something temporary, what, how we would accomplish that right now. And then that way, we get the protection we need right now. But then we also get the opportunity to delve into it a little more deeper and involve the public and just have a more robust process. It seems like a win-win to me. I just thought before we keep, continue to go through line by line and edit it, that maybe we just want to do something temporary.
And I would suggest if, if it's temporary, that it's two months, because there's other emergency management-related ordinance that we are going to need to bring forward. And we can bring them forward as a package as part of a larger discussion.
And, and is this still going to be in addition to the declaration? Because again, we could, you could bind those two things together. So if it's the declaration for this particular incident?
Yeah. Declaring, having the declaration is important so that it allows the police department to, to procure things that they might need in an, in an immediate emergency. So Chief, you can speak to that as well. That, that's the other component is that if you don't have a declared civil, we have a declared state of emergency for COVID, but we don't have is a state of declared civil emergency for what's going on around us. So Chief, do you, do you have anything to add to that?
I will, I will briefly say, yes, there are some, some items that we need. What I won't do in a public setting, discuss any vulnerabilities that we have as a police department. I will just simply say, there are some things we need.
Councilmember Nathland?
I just want to say, I don't see anything in this ordinance, in the chapter we would be adding, that talks about procurement. So are you saying that when you declare the civil emergency, you're also invoking the state definition of emergent? You see what I mean? I'm trying to understand how they, because this provision doesn't say anything about procurement. I think you already have the power to declare a state of emergency and, and have procurement for the emergency. That's totally separate outside of this, is my understanding. This is all seems to be about curfews, ordering stores to close, closing streets, and whatever else you might want to do that you think is necessary, item D. So I don't see anything about procurement. I'm missing it.
Procurement is state law. Mr. Tozer and Ms. Soto can go more in depth on that.
Yeah, usually with the declaration, and we've been through this a few times, with the declaration, that, that's what authorizes or opens up some avenues for procurement outside of normal procedures. So, or maybe out of budget or something like that, an emergent need. And I think that's more with the, and I don't know if we're mixing things with the, the declaration versus the ordinance. And I hope I'm getting this right. I'm not looking at the documents on my screen.
You don't need the code change to be able to procure items for this emergency.
Right. That would be under the declaration. I think both of those things are existing in this conversation, right? There's the declaration that would have that. And then the ordinance has some of the powers and the code change stuff, which we're talking about other options for.
Yeah, that's right. There are a couple of different things that are in play. There's just, again, the general emergency powers where the mayor can declare an emergency and waive certain purchasing requirements just based under state law. Then there's this curfew and other civil emergency order ordinance. So what, what I was thinking I could do right now, while we're still in the meeting, if this is something the council wants, because it's sounding like not everyone is comfortable adopting a longer-term new code ordinance. So instead, what we could do is just adopt an ordinance where this wouldn't then be in the code, but you could still have some of these same tools. And then you can have an expiration date for the ordinance. If that's something that you want to do, I'm happy to work on drafting that right now while we're still in the meeting. I might not be paying as much as attention as I normally would, but I can do that if that's what you want me to do.
Is there?
Just like nodding some heads, that might help.
Okay. Chief, do you have something to add to that? Or is it just your, your phone? I think it's just you.
Oh, no. It's, it's just my phone. I'm doing, I'm writing, I'm doing, trying to do a debrief with my command staff as they're leaving to go home at the same time I'm doing this.
Thank you. Okay. So let's put a pause on this item so Ann Marie can work on amendments and come back to it and move to Agenda Bill 20-44, interagency agreement coronavirus relief fund. Mr. Tozer?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. So this item, and I have it on one of my screens. So this is the first one. So this one is about the, the CARES Act funding and the, and the Department of Commerce grant. And actually, yesterday, late morning or around noon, apparently, I received this contract. So even though this did say that it wasn't expected for four weeks or so, they actually have turned around a contract really quickly. So I think on this, we put, you know, action or direction, I think that is still up to city council, they choose to do. But basically, this is how we contract with execute and access funds for the CARE, CARES Act funding, which was allocated to the city.
Do we have any questions or a motion? Councilmember Lingle?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve AB 20-44, interagency agreement coronavirus relief fund.
Do we have a second?
My second, Amy McHenry.
So Councilmember Lingle moved, Councilmember McHenry made a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. I'm hearing no no's, so I'm assuming that's a unanimous passage. Thank you. So then we will move on to Agenda Bill 20-45, contract request for public assistance for FEMA for discussion and/or decision. Mr. Tozer?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Sean Tozer again. So again, this contract is related to the request for public assistance. So this is the FEMA public assistance funding. So this is your general FEMA process with the 75-25 split, as we've talked about. This contract was much more straightforward. And again, this one was really ready for, there was no backend of it. Whereas Commerce was going to take an X step and finalize some documents, these came to us finalized and pretty much ready for signature. So again, our recommendation here is to continue on in the FEMA PA process and continue our eligibility to access those funds and, and execute, provide the mayor the authorization to execute that contract.
Councilmember Lingle?
Quick question. I recall there being passed discussion that we might be eligible for FEMA relative to the flood as well. Would that be part of this application too?
It'll be the same, it'll be the same format, but it's a different event. So it'll come as a separate contract. Yep. And we did, we did a request for public assistance on that also.
Yeah. Okay.
Great. Any further discussion on this item? Would council like to move it forward this evening? If so, I'd be happy to entertain a motion. Councilmember Lingle?
I'll move AB 20-45, contract request for public assistance under FEMA, which has a 75-25 split.
Second, Amy McHenry.
So we have Councilman, Councilmember Lingle made the motion. Councilmember McHenry seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to Agenda Bill 20-46, contract for King County Human Services Grant for discussion and/or decision. This is simply acceptance of a grant that is being provided to us by Councilmember Kathy Lambert from her personal office funds to help fund housing and heating and food needs within our community. Sean, Mr. Tozer?
Am I doing this one?
I assumed you were.
I haven't ever seen this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do about it, but I haven't, I haven't seen it.
I thought you were on this one. So I can just give a quick brief down is that Councilmember Lambert is giving us $5,000 and many jurisdictions within the district, $5,000 to appropriate to human services needs within our community. And so as you can see from the Agenda Bill, the intent is to, to work with Hope Link or another nonprofit agency to distribute those funds throughout the community and provide some assistance. That is her, her request is that this goes to human services needs and people in the community. That said, her district includes areas outside of our borders. So the limitations would not just be for the city of Duval. People in the county would be able to apply for funding as well. And this is simply just receipt of the grant. Does anyone have any questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we accept Agenda Bill 20-46, King County Human Services Grant contract.
Second, Van Bred Nicky.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hoag and a second by Councilmember Bred Nicky. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next up is, this will be a public works issue, Agenda Bill 20-47, resolution rejecting all bids submitted for the 2020 UV building hoist installation project, for discussion and/or decision. And I would hope that council would be willing to suspend the rules on this one and help us move forward. Mr. Lenishewski.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, and citizens on the call or video. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. Not sure what level of detail I need here, but in the Agenda Bill, you have an item speaking to, sorry if I'm not staring at you, rejecting the bids for the UV building hoist installation. So in the packet, there's a highlighted image that shows the hoist and how it is instilled in the UV building or installed. It is aiding in removing the pump rack for our recirculation pump system for circulating reclaimed water for the site or use throughout the site. And the bid was $39,000. One of my windows here has been in it. $658.14, well over our expectation. So we're recommending to council, we reject the bid, and staff is moving forward with installing the equipment ourselves. We'll take purchasing some equipment that will save us, actually will be beneficial for us in the future. We do hire out welding services once in a while, because we have small welders on-site, but they do not penetrate and weld heavy gauge metals, heavy action items like arms on the mowing machine and stuff like that. So we do spend some money annually several times a year getting things fixed, sending things to the shop to get fixed, and then they're out of service for a while. That happens consistently with our mowing machine. It is a fairly high-use tool that takes a lot of beating. So that's kind of the gist of it. I can switch my screen real quick and go over some of the preliminary costs. Those who are interested. So as you can see, $39,658. And just familiarizing yourself with the site, to the top of the image is where, you know, the offices are. Down below in the bottom corner is lab building, and then in between the solids holding tanks is where the UV building is. So we need a generator to run the welder instead of wiring all of our buildings for the welding machine to go in and out of them. Generator is simple. It'll give us mobility throughout the city as well, so we can do many other things. Materials include winches, fasteners, electrical features, and we are getting the steel fabricated locally. And then staff time and our electrical contractor are what we have as far as cost out of pocket. So the equipment to purchase, so if you look at this as a bidder, right, you wouldn't buy your own stuff, you'd already have welders and whatnot, but you would relay some of that cost in the bid to whomever. But yeah, the materials are under three grand. The amount of staff time, electrical contractor, for us, we expect to be two grand-ish. So we have the money in the budget to do this work. We need to get the work done prior to installing the pump rack in the basement and removing the existing one that's failed. So that's where we're at on that project.
Do we need to actually suspend the rules? Did we, did we suspend the rules on any of the last ones?
By council's rules, the technicality of it, yes. So the resolution does speak to...
I moved that we suspend rules for three touches on this item.
Second, Mike Remington.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is Agenda Bill... Yes?
That's a motion to suspend the rules.
Oh, right. It has been a long two days.
Agenda Bill 2047A, rejecting all bids for the 2020 UV building hoist installation.
Second, Amy McHenry.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Okay, so three more items of business left. Agenda Bill 20-48, Deputy City Administrator Contract Amendment, discussion and/or decision. We do have time to wait to approve this until the next meeting, so it's up to council if you want to suspend your rules or not. So with that, we did discuss and committee the whole, and Councilmember Lingle's amendment that was a clarification, and Councilmember Hoag's, was distributed during the committee at the whole. So I guess it's up to council on how you want to move forward with this. Councilmember Hoag.
So the changes that I recommended didn't end up on the email I got, so I was in touch with the attorneys, and I think Ann Marie knows what changes. There were two changes I was recommending, and the one was, it says interim city administrator, and it should say deputy...
Right.
...city administrator. And then the other was changing it to COLA instead of, I think, I see. So I think Ann Marie's got that, but I know that Laura has to be in agreement, so I just want to make sure that she says how she feels about those two changes.
And I did get a copy of the emails where you're going back and forth about those changes, and from a legal perspective, those are fine. It's really just if Laura is okay with those changes and we can put that in. What I would recommend that we do is if the council as a whole wants to make those changes, we can just do that, and you can just move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract in substantially the same form as what's included in the packet, and then we can make those tweaks. I'm going to get back to the ordinance now.
Okay.
And a note, Mike Remington, Laura sent a note saying she's okay with the changes.
Mm-hmm. But I see Ms. Soto's point in approving substantially and then just making the final changes that we've discussed. If folks are okay with that, that would probably be the easiest way to go, so we don't have to bring it back to council again if you'd like to move forward tonight. Councilmember Lingle?
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. They're not, I mean, they're consistent with everything else that's in the Agenda Bill. And so that's what's important, getting all the documents straightened out. So I would move AB 20-48, Deputy City Administrator Contract Amendment.
Did you want to say what the changes discussed as...
Yeah, sure. The first change is under professional services. That should read Deputy City Administrator. The second change is under item number one, section 4.4. It would read, is hereby repealed and replaced, to read as follows. Within section 4.4, the area that's redlined, we would delete Consumer Price Index, and that would be replaced with COLA. Section 5.1, item number two in the contract, would read, section 5.1 is hereby repealed and replaced as follows. And there would be no other changes.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So Councilmember Lingle made the motion and verbalized the changes that have been discussed. Councilmember Hoag had a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, and since this is the first touch, well, it's technically the second touch, because we did talk about it in committee at the whole, to Councilmember Iyer's point, there were some areas where we didn't spend the rules, but if I can get a motion to suspend the rules, then we can go ahead and take a motion on the underlying Agenda Bill.
Mike Remington, move that we suspend our three-touch rule on this item.
My second, Amy McHenry.
Okay, so Mayor Portem Remington first, and Councilmember McHenry second, and on suspending the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And then on the underlying bill, Agenda Bill 20-48, do we have, we had a motion on the floor. Wait, did we have a motion on the floor? I'm losing track at this point.
Yes.
We did have a motion on the floor and a second. So any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And the second to last item on the Agenda Bill before we get back to the ordinance is Agenda Bill 20-49, contract for Kennedy Drive Water Main Replacement Project, for discussion and/or decision by the public works.
Hey, good evening again, Mayor. You have Steve and Sean here for this, should you need us. We were pleased to report that we did receive eight bids, I think it was.
Seven.
Seven bids, favorable bids, contractors. So I do have a quick slideshow just to go over the three parts and the elements of the bid. There's the base bid, and then alternative one, and alternative two. So with that said, I will share screen. Put that in PowerPoint mode. Okay. Projects on Kennedy Water, Kennedy Drive, which is project R3 and proposed portion of D1. A while back, council had asked that this be split up because the AC water pipe below, and then there is PVC water main to be replaced above. The base bid with tax, $379,896.62, that's for the lower 950 feet of pipe and associated trench work, abandonment, tie-in, all of that, putting new services in, T-patching the road, which we'll talk about a little more detail under the alternative. And that's the base bid. Little image just of the plan set relative to the world. So that's Third Avenue towards the center of your screen. North is up. The alternative one, which was removing a T-cut and doing an overlay. So the picture on the left is the general condition of the road of Kennedy, especially on the, I guess, eastern portions and the 800 feet adjacent to Third Avenue to the west. Top corner, you can see a T-patch, so it generally encapsulates the trench itself, which is dug with a backhoe, normally a three-foot bucket. It's four and a half feet deep. They patch three feet wider than the trench on each side, it's called a T-cut, because it looks like a T. That's the base bid. To put a T-cut back on a 20-foot road that's fairly dilapidated is virtually impossible. It is a good opportunity, and we separated as an alternate to see what it would cost us to gain an overlay on the entire section of roadway that we are impacting. So with that said, that overlay, while you remove the money for the T-patch, would cost us $31,299, including tax. Alternative two is a PVC water main about 190 feet uphill east of Third Avenue. There's AC, and then there's ductile, and then there's PVC. The PVC portion, as this is the last section of AC besides the toll two, going through the water comprehensive plan right now with our consultant, PVC water main will be the next to be recommended for replacement. Has a fine service life. The problem is, anything you do or try to do with PVC water main can be complicated, can be prone to accidents. It does not function well when it is not laid exactly flat. So any bends vertically or horizontally in how the pipe is laid make it difficult. So for example, on Dorothy, a basic tap, the guys do, you know, every so often, you can't tell when the rock is pushing up on the pipe, you know, and it just splits. So all that water that came out of the water main break when we were doing the repair for a new service on Dorothy, just splits. It's a crack, it's a hairline crack, but it gushes out water, believe it or not. The plastic pipe flexes, and it just opens up and goes. So you can't tell if you're ever going to get that or not. It is brittle in that effect. AC is brittle as well. Ductile iron is not brittle. Ductile iron, ductile iron pipe will not split like that and fail. So with that said, council asked for the alternate, so we did split it up. So this alternate does include an overlay and not a T-cut, because we didn't want to do an alternate for an alternate, knowing the general condition of that road. So the base for alternate two is $63,122.31, including a full overlay in lieu of no T-cut. And that is the far east portion of the project. That'll tie into ductile iron water main, both east and west, and remove AC from every part of town except toll two. There are other PVC mains in town, but this is one that is immediately adjacent to our project. With that said, that is the project at hand. Sean, do you have anything to add?
It was really well done, Steve.
Pretty punchy over here, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I think that Steve's, what Steve said at the beginning, we had a really competitive bidding environment. We had a lot of people interested. This particular apparent low bid con bidder, Strickland and Sons, is who did the Baton Road sewer line with us. We had a really successful project on that. They were excited to come back and work for the city, and they definitely priced competitively along those lines, so.
All right. Any questions or comments from council? Do we have a motion to suspend the rules to approve the contract?
I think we had enough touches to not need suspension, so.
I don't disagree, but I'm just, you know, asking. And we actually, yeah, to Steve's point, we don't need it, but in that case, then do we have a motion?
I move, Brad Nicky, I move that we approve AB 2049, contract for Kennedy Drive Water Main Replacement Project.
Second, Amy McHenry.
All right, so we have Councilmember Nicky moved, Councilmember McHenry seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. And with that, we are at 9:30, so I need a motion to move beyond 9:30 so we can finalize our final item.
Mike Remington, I move that we move beyond 9:30.
Second, Michelle.
Okay, Mayor Portem Remington moved, Councilmember Hoag seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And we will go back to Agenda Bill 20-50. Ms. Soto has updated based on our conversation, so I will go ahead. I think this is the right one.
Yeah, so I sent two. Sorry, I made a couple other changes. I thought we were almost there, so I wanted to send it to you, but then I went back and made a few other additions. So let me just explain really quickly what I did. So I didn't change any of the underlying language except for stuff that referenced chapter versus ordinance. So instead of saying, you know, orders or proclamations issued pursuant to this chapter, I changed it to say pursuant to this ordinance. I also put in language that says that violations of this ordinance rather than violations of this chapter. I do want to point out a couple of things that I did change just based on the conversation. So I did... So I did add language about providing notice to the council. Actually, I missed notice within 24 hours, I can do that. But I did put in the, that it shall be ratified or brought to the council no later than the next regularly scheduled meeting. Under the violation section, I heard the concern about the language not specifying what type of violation it was. So I've put this in for now, that it's a misdemeanor. And the penalty for a misdemeanor, that's what a lot of other cities are doing, so if that's what you would rather do, we can do that. Otherwise, I can change it back to what was in the prior version. And I also updated the language in the effective date section. So because this is an emergency ordinance, you would be passing it tonight so that it's effective today, effective upon passage. You need a majority plus one of the entire council to approve. So I put language in the effective date section recognizing that this is an emergency ordinance and that assuming it passes, that it did so receiving majority plus one of the council. It also then mentions that it shall remain in effect until July 31, 2020, unless otherwise amended or repealed by the city council. So those are the main changes that I made, but if you want any other changes, I can make those quickly while we're in the meeting right now. Up to you, just let me know what you want to do.
Councilmember Napland?
I, I thought we were going to limit it just to the curfew, because that was the immediate need and the tool that was missing. And so I see there's still a whole bunch of items, including the open-ended item D. So I would like to propose to the rest of council that we leave it to the tool we need, which is the curfew, an ability for the chief to say, time to go home. And proactive. So I would, I would like to just leave item A.
So Council, Ms. Soto, can you just clarify, just for the body to make sure that we're all understanding correctly? If it's limited the curfew, do I have the authority to issue a civil emergency?
Well, you'd still be issuing a proclamation for the civil emergency, but within that proclamation, you can make some specific orders. The order that you would be then imposing is an order that there's a curfew. So as I'm understanding it, what Councilmember Napland is saying is, the only authorized actions which can be taken is declaring or proc- issuing the proclamation of the civil emergency and then ordering a curfew, but none of the not B, C, or D.
Councilmember McHenry, thank you, Ms. Soto.
This is related to Councilmember Napland's question. It's, I, I'm hoping for a little clarification. I don't know legally what the definition of a curfew is. So would a curfew mean that businesses could not be open past the curfew? Would it mean, for example, and, and kind of in a more broad sense, you know, what about people that work nights? I know, you know, some people are getting back to work now or have been working now if they're an essential worker. So how does that work in terms of? And I know our police department has really good judgment, and I'm sure that this would be done in a good way, but I'm just trying to understand what it means exactly for people who do need to be out past curfew to get home when they're working. But also, if it naturally includes businesses couldn't be allowed to be open, or is it just a sheltering thing? So if they were inside the business, that's allowed?
Well, I can, I can speak to a part of it. I mean, so, so what is applauded is their businesses are allowed to be open, but they just don't receive customers. So when you issue a curfew ordinance, and correct me if I've misunderstood the conversations over the last couple of days, you can put stipulations on what's required, but it might make it a little bit difficult to enforce. So that, those are the conversations I've had, Ms. Soto. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to step on your toes, but from what I've learned from the other cities, that's exactly what's going on.
No stepping on my toes. I'm happy to draft whatever works for you guys. I think the way this is worded right now, in that now what is Section 2A, you would have some flexibility on how you word that order. So what I would recommend is leave the language as is in Section 2A, and then if you are actually imposing a proclamation with a curfew order, that that order actually specify what you can and cannot do. So you could put in the exceptions directly in your proclamation in that order, rather than specifying all the potential exceptions within this ordinance itself.
Yeah. Councilmember McHenry?
Just a super quick follow-up. So you're saying that in the proclamation would be the place that, for example, watching all the videos and all the news across the nation, you know, seeing what is a curfew? Does it mean you can be on your property but outside? And in some cases, it seems to not be the case versus you know you need to be indoors? So that would be the place to specify what is meant by that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you would have, you know, here's your proclamation, including all of your whereas clauses as to why you are issuing the proclamation in the first place, and then you would say it is hereby ordered A, B, C, D, whatever the things are, you know, curfew, here are the exceptions for the curfew, things like that.
Okay, thanks. And, and so just to give people a little bit of perspective on my conversations with chamber members over the last 24 hours, is that, you know, we all have concerns about the restaurants staying in order, that, you know, the point of a curfew would be really to keep people from loitering in places and, and creating havoc. And so we have had discussions about, you know, how you draft that. Could people still go to the grocery store and the hardware store to pick things up? And so there are lots of options that can be tailored based on what our needs actually are at that moment, which is one of the nice things about the authority is being able to not, not necessarily paint with a broad brush, but be able to tailor what we need to our specific community needs. Councilmember Lengel?
I'm taking a look at this here, and if the, if we, if B, C, and D is removed, then the next paragraph has provided that, that's where the 24-hour notification is going to be inserted, is that correct? Yeah. And by inserting that, then if we don't like something she put in the order, we can change it.
Correct.
Okay. So if it's too broad or too narrow, whatever it might be, in 24 hours, council gets notice. If we want to do modifications or changes, that's our time to act. And, and then if there has to be, if, if, if it's acceptable, we don't modify. And we need to do further ratifications, it sounds like, no later than next regular meeting, is, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and as we all know, you can call, it only takes three council members to call a special meeting within 24 hours' notice. So, you know, that provides plenty of opportunity, I think, for council to review and make changes as necessary. Also, hopefully, time to consult with law enforcement on what their needs are. But again, of course, any proclamation coming forth, this would not be done without consultation and agreement with law enforcement, as is the case with pretty much everything that comes forth, emergency-related and public safety-related.
Well, I have to say, it'd be pretty crazy to issue an emergency order with a curfew without talking to Chief Hurt. That doesn't-
Yeah, no. No. I, I, I honestly don't know of a single person that would do that, and I think that, you know, you'd, you'd be creating undue legal risk there as well in some form or another, obscurely. So that's just not, if, if your strong mayor is not talking to your police chief about putting something like this in place and getting consensus, then you've got a much bigger problem. And I don't know of any city that that's ever occurred in.
So I guess the question, if, if that works for Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I want to make sure it's very limited, limited term. And I do appreciate that we would find out within 24 hours. And if we disagreed, we could call a special meeting and change it. So
Yep.
Feel better about that. I, I, I think this is a bigger conversation that needs to be had with the public, so.
So Mayor Portem Remington?
Yeah, I appreciate the direction we're taking and appreciate Councilmember Iyer really sharing some of the concerns. You know, we're a smaller town and, and people appreciate all their rights, but I also want to say, I really appreciate Chief Hurt just really sharing what he needs. We want to make sure that we've given the police chief and our officers the tools they need if something pops up, and that the mayor has the flexibility without delay to, to say, hey, we need a curfew and get it started. This is a nice balance, because it allows us to come back now and have that larger conversation. It's a, it's really an important issue. It's tough to try to make these decisions when we could have an emergency tonight, but I think this is that balance we were looking for. And Mayor, I, I know it must be frustrating times, but I appreciate you working with us and, and finding this balance, so we can get the, you and the chief what you need and give us an opportunity to be sure we're representing all of our citizens.
Of course, and, you know, as these things always go, even if we, you know, even if you pass it unchanged, that does not prohibit a change in two weeks for now, a month for now, six months from now. So even when, you know, just to remember and remind the legislative body that when you pass an ordinance, you still have authority to come back and say, I don't like the way this is working, and we can change it. So, you know, yes, everything has been rushed, but we are also in extraordinary times that no one has experienced in our lifetime. And it's a, it's a very difficult concept for folks to grasp and get all of our heads around. You know, even staff and, and myself, this has been huge. We did not expect to have to even look at these types of issues this year. So Councilmember Iyer?
From a practical standpoint, I generally not supportive of this measure. But if it was to go in place, I would prefer to see it be for a duration of two weeks or a month at the most. But generally, my closing comments on this is, you know, this is a microcosm of our rights in general as citizens and our responsibility and relationship to those rights as council members. The city of Duval doesn't currently have the power to infringe on a citizen's freedom of movement to this degree, regardless of reasons or emergencies. A democracy is a balance of freedom and safety. I have not seen sufficient evidence to restrict my fellow citizens' freedoms of movement to this extent. That is why I will not support giving the city the right to establish a curfew.
All right, thank you. So what we're looking for at this point is either council's pushing this off to the next meeting or making a motion with amendments.
So, and I can send a final version that includes the 24 hours' notice and removing the highlighted language, that you have a final version that you would be adopting tonight, if that's what you so choose. I'll send that right now, so you have it.
Mayor? Councilmember McHenry has some.
Your mic's bringing, Mayor. I'll assume that it kind of seemed-
Sorry about that. Councilmember McHenry?
Um, I really appreciate Councilmember Iyer's comments. And I just want to let everyone know that I would be okay with having this in effect until whatever a month would be, I guess, the end of June or something like that, because it's my understanding it would be fairly easy to extend if we wanted to. But I just wanted to throw that out there as an option.
Yeah, I mean, the issue with timing is, you know, the extension is, it's going to potentially, depending on the length of the extension, it can or review, it can put other things onto the side. So, you know, my recommendation is two months, because that gives us time to pull together some of the other, other ordinances that need to come forward that we weren't able to bring forward this week because of current circumstances. And a bigger, better time for a review, because what I, what I do worry about is being in the situation that something else happens and all of a sudden, we have to call a special meeting in two weeks because something drastic has happened. And I think that two weeks is not enough time to evaluate whether or not the ordinance was successful and necessary. And I think that, as folks are saying, you know, we've got, we had to come forward with this quickly. And to rush an end to it could be challenging. Ms. Soto? So I'm hearing that there's some concern about having maybe a longer time period for this particular ordinance. So one thing that you could do is you could just have this set to expire on the day after, for example, your next council meeting or your first meeting in July, so that you can discuss it at that meeting and then move forward with extending it at that time if you so choose. That would be something that could be done pretty relatively easily and wouldn't take as much work as if you had it expire before the meeting, because then you might potentially have to set a special meeting just to extend it, if that's what you wanted to do.
Councilmember Napland? And then Councilmember Lengel?
So I, I see now why the date was set for two months, because you want to have something permanent in place. And I, I think there's several here that maybe don't even know, I mean, we haven't had this and haven't needed it for such a long time. It, it just, I, I don't see a problem with this expiring and then putting it on our long-term plan to, to look at it. I, I, I just don't see this as, you know, suddenly today and forevermore, we have to have this type of ordinance in place. I, I just don't, I, just my own personal feeling, I, I don't think it's as necessary as it feels at this exact moment. And so I think having it expire the day after our next council meeting, we can, we can weigh how we feel then. I mean, we're all feeling kind of heightened emotion right now, so it feels really, you know, big. And so we might feel differently in two weeks, and I, I think having it expired after our next meeting, we can see how we feel then. And I, you know, I don't like making emotional decisions, and I, I think it's appropriate to to do that. I, I like that suggestion. Anne Marie, thank you.
Councilmember Lengel?
I'm, I'm not sure if I'm looking at the right document here.
Sorry, I sent many.
I see the 24 hours, but I thought what we were talking about was taking out B, C, and D. Am I misunderstanding?
I, I can take it out. I didn't think that was very-
Pardon?
I didn't know if that was the consensus of everyone to take it out, because Councilmember Napland mentioned it. If, if you want to take it out, I can take it out too. I'll, I'll wait until we know what all of the changes are going to be before I send our final, final version. But if, if everyone shakes their head and that's what they want, then I can take that out, but right now, I didn't know if that's what you wanted.
Okay, so just to try to wrap that piece, B, C, and D up. As I understand what you said previously, if there's some specific things, there's a place for that in the declaration? Is that, that's correct, right?
Yeah, if there were specific parameters and exceptions related to the curfew, you could put that in the declaration.
So, and of course, we can change all this, 24 hours' notice, blah, 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 that we have all that authority, no matter what. And so that suggests to me that we don't need B, C, and D. So I guess I'd like to know if other council members agree with a limited taking out B, C, and D. I see Councilmember Napland nodding. I see Councilmember Napland nodding.
I'm in agreement with that as well.
That's three of us. Anybody else?
So Councilmember Iyer, and then I want to see.
I think it might be, it might be helpful if somebody just made a motion to strike something and it would just get us to the.
It might be easiest if Anne-Marie shares her screen, and then you guys can make the edits live.
So, and the other thing I would like to ask is the chief's perspective on these new proposed changes. Because this all boils down to law enforcement, and that is the whole purpose of this ordinance, is law enforcement's ability to protect our community.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm driving. I'm on Hour 30 of, in two days. Again, I, am I here? Oh. Again, I just need a tool in the immediate future. I'm not suggesting we're ever going to use it. I'm just asking for a tool if we need it. I don't care if it sunsets, like I said earlier, in a, in a week or two weeks. I don't care, guys. I really don't. I just, I'm asking you for assistance in providing a tool that we may never use. I hope we don't. But I don't want to be in a position of needing it and not having it. That's it.
Councilmember McHenry?
I just have a clarification question for the chief. I just want to make sure, we're talking, because I know you're driving and you're not looking at this right now, but keeping it only the curfew in, taking away B, which is being able to close businesses, and C, being able to close public areas essentially, including streets, alleys, stuff like that. I just want to make sure, do either of those have an impact on you? I kind of wondered, I thought, I guess, that the police could close down a street already if they need. So I just want to understand exactly, besides the curfew, do you need any of those other bullet points that I just mentioned? Being able to close businesses and.
I'm just going to suggest unless a curfew closes the city down, rioting can move to an area that's not under closure and continue.
Okay. Councilmember Lengel? Oh, you're unmute, councilmember.
And Chief, you can hear me, right? So you missed.
I can.
Yeah, you may have missed part of the discussion. And if you have to do B, C, and D, then the mayor would be able to put that in the emergency proclamation. So it's just that it wouldn't be in the ordinance.
So you. I want to, I want to clarify, that wasn't what I meant earlier when I was talking about putting in the parameters. That was related to the curfew because that was what the question was before, was whether or not the curfew, the term curfew needed to be defined and whether that included people who were coming home from work or people who were on their way to work or things like that. If you want to be able to have in the proclamation the authority to close business establishments or close public areas, then I recommend keeping in A, B, and C. You can remove D if the concern is that that's too open-ended and you don't know what that means, then remove D. But then ultimately, if the mayor has ordered something through A, B, or C that the council disagrees with, you can always then bring it to a meeting with the council and you can ratify it or amend it or get rid of it. So you can still make the changes after that. So really, it's just, those are the things I think that the chief. Are specifically A, B, and C. D would give a little bit more flexibility, but if there's concern that that's too open-ended, then you could just remove that one provision. And then ultimately, again, the council will still have the ability to make changes to that. So at most, you know, the, the order could be in effect for maybe 24 hours or so before the council would have an opportunity to hurry up and get to a meeting and change it.
Councilmember Napland, and then Councilmember Bridniki?
Oh, maybe I shouldn't have, Councilmember. I just wanted to make a motion to remove B, C, and D and to change the expiration date to one day after our next council meeting. So I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, and we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? I'll second. We have a second discussion, and I will open it up to Councilmember Bridniki at this point, since she did have her hand raised for discussion.
I was actually in support of the original resolution as you have it written. So I just want to say I support having it as a tool for our public safety to use. As a business owner, I was in full support of this. So where we are at this point, I'm not exactly sure. But I was supporting the original write-up of this. And, and I just, I'm just wanting to support what is best for our citizens, for our businesses, for our public safety, safety to use as a tool. I don't see this as becoming something that's going to. There's a lot of fears about how we're going to use this, but I don't think our government, our leadership here is going to use this in such a way that we should be worried about these things.
Councilmember McHenry, and then Mayor Partem Remington?
I just want to say that I definitely support removing D. And I support having the expiration be one day after the next meeting, which I think would be seven, and then relooking at this. But I feel that B and C should just stay in to make sure that they have more flexibility.
All right, thank you. Mayor Partem Remington?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember McHenry. You know, and I agree with removing D. I'm not a police officer, but I can tell you at a fire scene, I've evacuated high-rises with 1,000 people in it. And I wasn't asking to leave, I was telling you, you cannot be in that building. And I do it, one for their safety, but the other part is firefighter safety. Because every now and then someone says, look, you know, I need to stay at my desk. And it means firefighters have to go into that building and pull them out of there. There's, you know, if they're overcome by smoke, it just changes the entire dynamic. So my concern is with police, you know, if we have a curfew and you have to stay inside and business owner said, oh, just stay inside. But if there's rioting and people trying to get in there, you don't want them in there. You want everybody out of downtown, and it just, it makes it safer for police. And again, I'm not a police officer, so the chief may disagree or, and I don't want to put him on the spot. I just want to make sure that they have those tools. I think with the 24-hour notice or ability to change things, this is a big deal. So I really support council wanting to take our time and do this right. And it is really tough to try to do it on the run because you make more mistakes. But I also don't want to limit the chief's ability. You know, if something's happening, they're not going to have time to get us all together and say, oh, yeah, let's go ahead and add evacuating. So I agree with Councilmember McHenry. I like trying to leave B and C in there to give, you know, if the mayor says we're closing down parks, and it just gives one more tool to have some control.
All right, thank you. Are there any more comments on the amendment? Councilmember Hoag?
I also agree with Councilmember McHenry and Mayor Partem Remington. I personally would like to see D removed and B and C remain.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Iyer or Councilmember Lengel? Councilmember Lengel, you did raise your hand, so I know you have some comments.
Um, I always forget how to do this. I can amend my motion.
Um, Ms. Soto, process.
Yeah, I mean, it's getting late here again, guys, you know.
It is.
Yes, what I would suggest just for ease of moving this forward and getting it done, you have a motion on the table, so Councilmember Napland, if everyone, it's sounding like people want to take out D and then have the effective date go until the day after the next meeting. So Councilmember Napland could withdraw her motion, or you guys can vote on her motion, vote it down. And then I'm going to suggest I just share my screen, make the changes so that everyone can see. And then you guys can make a motion based on the final version that I put up on the screen.
Councilmember Napland?
I will rescind my motion. Is that the word I should use?
Yeah, Councilmember Lengel also has to agree because she seconded it.
Councilmember Lengel agrees.
So now I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so here's the most recent version that I had emailed where I added in the 24 hours. I'm going to remove Section D. And put that it will remain in effect until June 17th is the day I see as being the day after your next meeting, but someone, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm just going to do a slow-ish scroll. So again, this is all the same aside from the title of the ordinance. This is all the same that was in before. I did add this last whereas clause, just recognizing that this is an emergency ordinance, which requires a vote of majority plus one. Again, this is the language we already discussed. Here is Section 2, taking out subsection D, adding in the 24 hours' notice to the council, and then action, endeavoring to act within 48 hours, but no later than the next regularly scheduled meeting. Same language that was in before. Violations are a misdemeanor. And then again, the effective date being an immediate effective date and staying in effect until June 17th unless amended or repealed by the city council.
All right.
Other changes that people have to make while I'm sharing my screen? Otherwise, I'll stop sharing my screen, or you can vote with it still up here, and then I'll send the final, final version to everyone when we're done.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion if possible. Councilmember Lengel?
Make a motion to adopt. What's, are we AB 20-51? Do I have the number right?
Yep. Or it's 20-50.
As amended.
As amended.
Do we need to formally suspend the rules to do it?
You will. Yeah, actually, that's correct.
Let's do that first, sorry.
So first off, do we have a motion to suspend, to suspend the rules?
I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and vote on this.
Any second? So we have a motion by Councilmember Hoag, a second by Mayor Partem Remington. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Now, do we have a motion on the underlying Agenda Bill as amended?
I'll repeat it, make a motion to approve Agenda Bill 20-51 as amended.
Right, do we have a second?
Diane Bridniki?
Okay, so we have Councilmember Lengel with the motion, Councilmember Bridniki with the second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, will you please take a roll-ball vote because this does require a majority plus one?
Councilmember Bridniki?
Aye.
Councilmember Iyer?
No.
Councilmember McHenry?
Aye.
Councilmember Remington?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lengel?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion passes.
All right, thank you so much. We have no further business. So unless there are objections, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Good job, everybody.
Good night. Good night.